It is 1:02 PM and I recall this work session ordered. And Deb Harris, who is recording for us today, would you please do a little call?
Certainly. Bob Hayden.
Here.
Don Klein.
Here.
Karen McLean.
Here.
Craig Harris.
Here.
Susan Lloyd.
Here.
Patty Sargent.
Uh, yes. Okay.
Thank you. And also with us today, Deb, please note Nathan Mayman from our consulting planner from Williams Works. We have an agenda for today.
I'll move to approve the agenda for today as written on second.
Discussion.
Discussion.
Um, I think we need to add approval of minutes from the September 21st meeting.
It's not already the meeting though.
Well, I wondered about that. We should skip it?
Then we just go ahead into the next regular meeting?
Okay. All in favor, it's been moved and seconded to approve the agenda as printed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. Okay, we've approved the agenda. So, we are here in a work session. Let me just address the general public out there. Thank you for your interest in such things. As I may have mentioned before, this is a work session, so we ask that you respectfully remain quiet while we get our work done. We're gonna be very focused today. And if there is, if it's still daylight when we're done, we will take public comments, okay? But we're not going to interrupt our work session to answer questions. Please write them down, whatever you need to do to ask them when we're done with our work session, okay? And we want to let Nathan get back on the road. Okay, so Nathan, you said us.
Yeah.
Some pretty cool amendments here.
Yeah.
How do you want to do this?
Um, so we'll start with, I'll go through the draft with all of you. At the last meeting, just to kind of recap, I listened to your sort of concerns on the list of the public's concerns, things we discussed with the township attorney, some best practices that we could use in other places. We kind of just did a, because it's an open discussion about which direction, you know, we wanted to go with certain standards, updating them and whatnot. You've had an existing ordinance, you do have an existing ordinance, we made amendments to it, so I did clarify and discuss with the township attorney some of those amendments we made and some of the direction of those amendments and standards we made recently. So, we wanted to do this sort of in an ender, you know, in a time branch to be set, but we want to do this in a little bit of an iterative process, just so that, you know, when we make these initial edits, we can track them, like use track changes instead of just sending you a document so that you don't know exactly where we updated. One of the things that I did talk to the township attorney about was, you know, updating a little bit of the way this is formatted, embassy definitions, we're gonna probably do that in the next iteration, but I wanted to focus primarily on the land use concerns we had, some of the setbacks, some of the farm land reservations, some of the screening, beefing up, you know, some of those standards, ag protection, environmental protection, homeless, really focusing on the meat potatoes and your land use, land use concerns that we would tackle as work.
Yeah.
So, I did send over, you know, previously some examples, Mason County, a few others. And so some of these are, some of these standards, you know, are similar to those. We've worked in, in town training with embassy, we have that in terms of their local government source recommendations, work with the attorneys who help write them, maybe those professors. So, some of the best practices from that guidebook are, you'll see in here as well. So, anyway, just kind of wanted to give an overview of the sort of things that we focused on. Anyway, primarily, you know, what you'll see is that the things that we added relate to the special use specific standards. So, we can go into your general provisions for smaller systems. We're probably gonna polish that a little bit, just to try to differentiate between the two a little bit better, just so that it's clear what is a small system and what is more of a commercial scale or large system. Anyway, any questions?
That's something to do before we finalize, you guys sure?
Yep, yep. So, yeah, we'll probably tackle that next, because that's gonna involve more of some formatting changes, and I didn't want to lose the, have you lose the tracking these land use changes first, which is really the basis of what we want to go with.
Yeah, and those, and those, that polishing will help.
Correct.
The reader distinguish between the small at home sort of onsite system versus anything larger.
Correct. Okay. Basically mounted, et cetera. So, that's typically, as you probably know, a lot of ordinances will differentiate between building mounted, ground mounted, small scale, large scale. Yep. Any questions before I look forward to these? And, yeah, this is intended to be an open discussion, so if you have, if you have questions on any of these, feel free to come up here. Okay. Our edits start on page three, so in terms of that, hopefully, does everybody have color copies of our directions? Okay, good. I did talk with Clint about this a little bit. We updated, we changed it to large solar energy systems, just because this also addresses large scale building mounted. We may change that language a little bit, but I used large throughout this, just to sort of try to start to differentiate between the different types of systems, just to clarify that. I did change Meskeen County Drain Commissioner to Meskeen County Water Resources Commissioner, and have you discussed or sent me that email? And then we'll get down to subsection four here, and we start to talk about setbacks a little bit. So, what we started to do here was differentiate between the different types of setbacks, so whether that's property lines for contributing or contributing or non, setbacks from water resources, so whether that be streams, rivers, ponds, lakes, wetlands, or lands located within 100 year floodplain. We'd like to also have a differentiation here again regarding those common versus non-common property lines. And then, I did not put any setback values in here. These are sort of things that we can discuss, so, you know, without sort of performing forward, any sort of comments on setbacks section?
You were most basically referring to page four, item four D, that says we probably that there are common property lines of two or more, or in general?
Yep, so it's common in solar energy ordinances for setbacks. If you have two properties that are adjacent to one another, the setbacks that are, that you set for normal property lines for properties that aren't participating, you could reduce those. We basically just stated here that they're not subject to the setbacks for shares, so they may be under the same ownership, they may be under a different ownership, but if they're both participating, that would eliminate that setback requirement.
Okay.
Now, you don't have to do that, that's just a common practice in zoning ordinances for solar, but it's something we included just for discussion, if that's something you want to keep or not.
Okay. So, those are the two parcels next door that are, both parcels would be in the project.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. Do we need to, shall we discuss that now, Nathan, or do you want to?
Yeah, yeah, no, so as we go through, I'd like to, let's stop at each section that we don't get lost. So, regarding setbacks, I know there's been conversations about setbacks from property lines, setbacks from neighboring residential homes. You can do either. You know, if a residential home is closer to a property line, it's of course going to have a bigger impact, so sometimes that setback from a actual dwelling is better, because it ensures the setback from the dwelling versus the property line. So, you know, some dwellings are 200 feet from a property line, some are 40 feet from a property line. So, that, the way you want to, it really just depends on, you know, the preference of the planning mission. A lot of ordinances can be 100 to 200 feet from a dwelling, that's pretty common. You can go larger than that, you just have to make sure that if you are going to go larger than that, that, you know, being reasonable with the values. And everything really has to be based on a tangible, you know, tangible standard, so we have to have a reason for what we're doing anytime we, you know, read in a resident's standard. So, whether that's basing it off of a best practice or another ordinance, or, you know, again, we're looking at spacing, existing conditions of your township, we have to fix it on something, so.
Okay. If our original ordinance said 600 feet, is that basis enough for us to go to 600 feet?
Is it in, is 600 feet in the existing ordinance?
The existing ordinance, not be updated from 2009?
The one we replaced.
Yeah.
3.45.
The one paragraph?
Yeah.
Uh huh.
That was, that was 600 feet.
And that was done in December?
2018.
No.
2018, it was adopted in January 2019.
Yeah.
I don't have a copy of it anywhere where it says 600.
That little paragraph, I can probably make a copy of that, but then I just go get a new book. Okay. I'll get it, okay, Patty. That's your job. Well, thank you. Well, that's happening. Can, can we talk about that four D? Can we discuss right now whether we want to keep that?
Yep.
Well, if all of the properties are participating, that's one thing. If they're not participating, and even if it's a vacant lot, I think that it needs to be considered a buildable lot, therefore there could be a house on it, and you wouldn't want to consider that.
Okay, yeah, but four D specifically, circle that word not.
Yeah, so these are all about participating.
Yep.
Parcels.
Correct.
And why would you need setbacks if they're all participating?
And that's the idea.
Yep. Spell it out.
Yep.
Any discussion, anybody?
I'm sorry, I was.
Four D on the, the changes there? So, so these are like connecting properties, it's not like a road between the two. They're connecting, actually connecting properties.
Right.
Okay, okay.
Yep.
Because then the end of that sentence talks about except front property lines, water, and road right of way setbacks that should still apply.
Yep, so, yeah, so if it's a budding a road right of way, it would still apply, even if the road across the street is participating. This would only be for common property lines and, and that's basically defined as immediately adjacent.
Yeah.
Yeah, so this does it like it's, if there was 600 feet before. The one thing that we could look at, sorry to skip back to, is, okay, if I skip back to that one?
Yeah, I just thought maybe we could, you know, say four D, let's do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah, because you're still keeping your water, your proposed water setbacks, you're still keeping your property line, you're still looking at, you know, keeping that.
So, if we can say, how do you, anybody opposed to keeping four D the way it's presented here today?
No.
Come down to it, okay. Okay, we're gonna keep four D, Nathan, woo-hoo!
All right, one down.
One down, okay. Now, okay, so backing up to C then.
Yeah.
All right.
So, C, C has to do with your setbacks from basically water resources, natural, those types of natural features.
Okay, and this would be on, within an individual parcel?
Correct. So, you know, whether or not it's a, you know, stream, a river, pond, a lake, wetland, you know, we don't have to include all these things. If you're primarily concerned with drains, wetlands, 100 year flood, you know, we can, again, we have to think about which districts this is permitted in. So, we're not talking about, you know, we're not from Lake Michigan. We're focused primarily on, you know, your input bodies more.
Yeah. So, now, if this, how does C relate to anything else? I mean, is C the key to where? No, right above it, there's another setback, right?
Yeah, so we can, you know, there's our property lines, so A talks about components of a solar energy system being located within a certain number of feet of a side or rear property line versus a road right of way. Now, typically ordinances, you know, will have a larger setback from a road right of way, particularly for solar, but this C addresses that your, you know, not just property lines, but your.
The drains.
Yep. It's common in a lot of ordinances. Some, some counties will have, your water resources commissioner, whatever each individual kind of calls it, will have setbacks from drains that are already required. Meskeen County, I wasn't able to figure out quickly whether or not it has, they have their own standards. Meskeen County, for example, has their own standards, you know, are, are some examples. Those are typically 25 to 50 feet generally, and it's to allow for access to the drain if there needs to be modifications, allow for some, some level of block rate, for, you know, vegetation, water quality, things like that. And that's for all of the elements.
Yeah, and, and I would, 40 feet for some reason is stuck in my mind.
Through the second panel?
Yeah, but I don't think that's, that's right. I talked with Brenda, and she gave me the numbers, and I'm wondering if for our purposes today, we should simply say something like what's currently recommended or what's in place, because right now, there is, for the sake of the Pearson Drain, there are setbacks where nothing can be disturbed.
Yep.
The easement. And so, the question for us would be, do we want more of that or less, or just go, not less, but go to the.
We're gonna need animal corridors and animals need water, right?
Right.
I think it's important to consider animals and consider that they have to drink and...
Are you saying more than what the drain commission has established?
Yes.
I think we know too from other solar places, the drains happens to affect other areas, so we would be better to go a little bit bigger, just to, you know, because we already know, we've seen instances where the drain affected other people's property, because so.
And we just spent a lot of money on that Pearson Drain.
Yeah, you don't want it to flood.
No.
And we don't know what solar, we know that the solar will affect it, because they're gonna, you know, disturb the land around it. It's gonna be different than what it is today. If you disturb the land, it changes your.
It affects your range underneath.
Yeah.
Well, I know the zoning book in general, you have to be 35 feet off an easement to build.
An easement of any type.
Well, as far as I know, so if you were doing a home or something, and there was an easement there, you'd have to move that home 35 feet off it. So, I wouldn't think that you'd want to go any less than that, because township paid big money for those easements along the lake. Plus, I mean, there's often ecological reasons, but I mean, just legal reasons, you know?
Yeah, well, we definitely can go.
You've talked about the heavy higher population, correct?
No, sorry.
A higher population.
Yeah.
So.
High deer population, thank you.
High, yeah.
I was trying to process that.
I thought you said deer.
Hi deer.
Um, so, yeah, I mean, if, if there's a concern about animal corridors, you know, drain access for improvements, again, those things have to be maintained, you know, but that's not just a one and done drop in. So, you want to be able to provide access for trucks, vehicles, anything else that needs to get in there. So, yeah, I mean, having a setback that's larger than the, you know, what the drain commission, I think it's fine. You know, and we're talking, we want to be reasonable, but, yeah, absolutely, if you think it's larger than that, it's on the 35 feet from the easement. I don't know how big those drainage easements are. Do we know, is it a standard width? That's something we can dig into a little bit more, but.
Yes.
I think it would be nice to get based on 30, not either side of the train.
Okay.
Because animals, they're gonna need to go somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I mean, I think that's reasonable. I mean, from the sounds of it, like, like you said, there's, you want to be able to allow animals to pass through. Anytime we're looking at, you know, larger scale, like, you know, facilities anywhere, I mean, those are the types of concerns that would come up.
And that would give the water a chance to dissipate.
Yeah.
A little bit.
Or.
Again.
Yep, yep, and depending on how your resources commissioner, you know, that if, if they're going to require retention or detention, you know, maybe that's a place for that to be located. If you don't allow for the actual facility itself, maybe those are allowed to be in, in that, in that setback to an extent, you know, there needs to be places for water. And there, there is some level of impact, and it depends on how your resources commissioner or your department, that department calculates, you know, the infurbial surface versus, you know, building versus panels, and that's really, we've seen it calculated in several different ways, so ultimately, if they require detention or attaching to water, we're just gonna put that too.
And we should be getting a map from our water resources commissioner.
Okay.
That shows what, exactly what the, to scale of the stats.
Okay, okay, good.
Okay, so, and I'm trying not to get ahead of myself here, but I, I do it every time I open my mouth. There are, there's different categories of setbacks.
Yep.
Is what I'm thinking?
Yep.
Okay, so we have setbacks between any solar, well, let me start at the starting point. The, the starting point would be any fixture facility of a solar large, solar installation, that would be the starting point to measure from.
Yep.
Is that the same, no matter what, in these ordinances? Or do different parts of a solar installation have different setbacks?
We would place it all from the solar, any, any equipment, so panels, framing, or racking, any of that would be, all be setbacks. So, any of your conversion, you know, electrical devices, or a lot of the times those are interior to the site, through DC, AC conversion, all of that would be the same setback. So, really, it's, you're looking at a periphery of keeping it within a box.
Okay, and the fencing, is that, do we measure structural fencing?
So, you wouldn't necessarily allow from, or measure from the fencing. Usually, the fencing will be between the equipment and the landscaping, so you don't necessarily want to see the fencing outside of landscaping.
Right.
Inside, the landscaping would be closest to the property line, then fencing, then the equipment.
Okay.
And where, is the setback taken from the landscaping, the fencing, or the components?
Components.
Components.
Yep.
So, if you've got a 20 foot gap between the component and the fence to the interior, that means you only want to be 15 feet away from the stream.
Yeah.
This was a little confusing.
Who, who?
The setback's got to start with the fences.
Yeah, I agree.
Now, where the components are.
Because the fencing is gonna destroy, it's going to disturb that soil. When you put that fencing in, it'll disturb the soils.
Yeah, so we could, we could turn that around fencing. It'll probably be closer, it's usually pretty close to the equipment anyway, with the exception of maybe allowing for passage through with a truck or something like that, which they need to get through for maintenance. But, yeah, we could measure from the fencing versus the, the equipment. I, I haven't necessarily seen that done, but I don't think that's unreasonable. If you're talking about animal corridors, talking about that sort of thing, you know, if that's a concern, I think that's a, you know, that's a valid, a valid point, that you're gonna want to have that measurement be with a fence to allow for, you know, pass, passage.
Well, yeah, even vegetation, you can't plant the vegetation in that, the drain easement either.
Right. Yep. So, and that's all usually worked out with the, well, so burming and things like that, no. And again, I mean, when an engineer gets in to actually design these sites, they're going to be working with the, the resource commissioner to figure out what they can and can't do in relation to that easement. They're still going to have to comply with the ordinance no matter what. So, if, you know, if you require landscaping between, it is going, they're going to have to figure out how to, you know, locate it between, you know, the outside of the easement, but also between the equipment and the property line, or the equipment and the residence, whatever it is that we're measuring from. So, they will have to figure out a way to do that, you know, regardless.
Also, the ones we're going to be, or just not speaking from the fence.
Okay.
It'll eliminate all the confusion.
Yeah, okay, so from the fence then, and the way we have it written currently, and it looks like your old ordinance actually measures from any house or residential dwelling located on a water parcel where solar panels are not being placed. Is that a standard that you, that you want to maintain? I mean, are we, do we want to measure from, from the home then? You're, this township versus a, you know, we work with a few townships of varying density, yours is pretty sparsely populated, so I don't think that 600 feet will necessarily, you know, be unreasonably. A lot of your homes are gonna be spaced away from this and these sorts of things anyway. But, yeah, that was, you know, in your, in your previous, your app, it's probably fine. Do you, was there a reason when you, when you updated to the new one, why that was, why that was changed, or why it wasn't kept? Do you recall?
Could've, should've, would've, you know?
Yeah.
That's a, that's a discussion with people.
Okay.
And we just.
There were just comments, they were coming from the group.
Yeah, okay.
So, are we back to four D? Or?
Yeah, four A and B have to do with your property line and building setbacks, residential buildings.
Okay.
C has to do still with your water resources. So, I know we kind of keep, we kind of keep bouncing back and forth.
Yeah, okay.
Are we good, so we talked about 100 feet from the fence. We're good with that?
From the pond street.
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, from there, but not from the fence, right?
Okay. That's, that's only for C.
Correct.
That 100 feet is for C.
Yes.
Okay. That setback to be discussed is now 100 feet.
So, Susan, on the agreed upon, is four C 100 feet from a fence?
Uh, they's.
In the water, in the, like, district, drain district, et cetera?
Well, it, the language right now says any component of a large solar energy system. And I think what I've heard here is that instead of solar, yeah, component, it will be the fence.
The fence, that's what.
And then shall not be located within where setback to be discussed would be 100 feet.
So, we're good with that, right?
For a minute.
Okay. Yeah, yeah, nothing, nothing says it out. I mean, we're, we're, this is an iterative, this is a step by step process, so.
Okay.
Yep, okay.
Oh, it's going to be.
Okay. Back to B. You want to, so A and B are related. One deals with any property line, so you're talking about your sides, your rear, your front right of way.
Right of way.
And then that's A. And B deals with separation from, you know, residential dwellings. So, you can have setbacks that are different. You know, some of these properties aren't going to have a dwelling on them. Some are going to be vacant farm field, there may be accessory agricultural buildings on there. So, if your, if your primary intent of the original 600 feet in the 600 feet you're talking about now is from residential buildings, we, we can include that, and then we can just, we can talk about other setbacks. But, so with B, do we want that to be 600 feet from any residential dwelling? And that would be a house, that would be a, you know, you basically have single family homes here, any dwelling unit.
Well, I think non-participating.
On, of non-participating.
And non-participating parcels could be sold, and a house could be placed, so we have to take that into consideration.
Right.
And so, we would have to have 600 feet from a non-participating parcel.
So, you're back to property.
Just, so you're back to property lines.
Just, just in case if somebody decided to tell the house.
That's right.
Yeah.
Yeah, those are the types of things we have to talk through. So, yes, that could happen. There'd be some non-conforming, that you'd be, result in a non-conforming situation. I don't know, you're zoning administrator, you probably know what I'm talking about, but, you know, where your established ordinance exists, and then something changes, and it grandfather's in a setback requirement like that. That sometimes happens. But if you're looking to prevent that sort of situation and provide for, you know, planning for the future. planning for the future, then a, a property line might make the most sense. But you're gonna be setting back, I mean, six hundred feet is quite a way in, um, from a property line boundary.
Well, you know, I think all of us have been doing a lot of reading, and setbacks and land values are all over, all over the chart depending on where you're reading. I've read several places that it really becomes more, I don't know, large, the property value loss becomes much larger if you get in within a tenth of a mile. And a tenth of a mile would be five hundred and twenty eight feet. So if we do six hundred, we're minimizing any value loss. You know, for, for the property owners that are not participating.
Right.
That's like a dual purpose.
Yeah.
Yep, yeah, I think that makes.
So we're, if you're looking for rationales in that one?
Yes, yes. Um, yeah, anytime, if, if you have any of that information that you've researched, you know, feel free to, something, you know, you can look at it too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that, I, you know, we've got to read it all. Um, a lot of the time we're talking about setbacks, we're talking about weightless impacts, so we're talking about, you know, uh, building massing having impact, uh, you know, aesthetics, we're talking about noise, we're talking about, we're talking about all sorts of things, so. Um, but yeah, I mean, property values are certainly something that a special use is considered with, you know, we wanna know what sort of impact a use will add on a business.
Okay, so I'm gonna make it right here, six hundred feet from there to finalize, but I'd like to go all the way back up to four, because part of my confusion in reading ordinances is always where do you start to measure the setbacks? Okay, and now again, the language in number four is closest point of the solar array at minimum tilt for any solar energy system component. So, how, six hundred feet from there I'm talking about?
Well, we've already agreed with the, I think, we're gonna start the process out to raise your components.
All, for all?
For everything, yeah.
Yeah, if you're gonna do it for one, I would recommend doing it for all.
Okay.
That way, that way it's consistent, and that way there's not any confusion as to, you know, if somebody's reading the ordinance.
Yeah.
Um, it's a completely measured from a particular point. The reason why we, we use, you know, a maximum tilt, because heading on the angle of the array, that can impact, you know, how close they are to the property line. Not by much, but it just makes it clear. But in this case, if we're gonna use fence, that'll all be changed.
Okay, got that then?
Yep.
Okay, so it's setback distance shown measured from fencing, comma, and as follows, and then we can get into the A, B, R. Thank you, Paul.
Yep.
Okay, so then in V, A, we wanna take out that language again, and you can go over to the large solar.
All right, we'll be in bounds.
Correct. Oh, well then, do we need, do we need A at all, or do we change it all?
And this is where, this is the essential, we sort of started having, so, you know, if, if, we, we wanna, we want a setback from the right of way, from the front property line, no matter what. Um, but your side property lines, we can have those be measured from, you know, again, if we're talking about residential uses, we can have it be measured from a house. Or we can have it be measured from a residential property. We can have setbacks be differentiated between an ag or residential property, again, it might create future non-conforming issues if a ag property goes to residential in the future, or something like that. So those are sorts of, sort of the consequences of that decision, not a, who knows what'll happen in the future, you can't plan for everything. Um, but those are the philosophical sort of discussions we have to have. We want it to be measured from a residence. Again, if somebody may decide to build a residence within that setback in the future, and that's up to them as that adjacent property yard, but.
Okay, so in A, I, I need to focus on this, we're talking about the setback from any road right of line.
Yep, yep, or your side or rear. And again, we don't have to do all of these things, but a lot of ordinances will require a minimum at least from a property line, as well as a maybe larger setback from a dwelling. And that's sort of how we wrote it here.
Okay, there's two, two places to write a setback, so they can be different.
Yep.
Okay.
Your side and rear are usually similar.
Thank you for holding my hand through the.
No problem. Yep, yeah, that's, if a planning commission has a, has a, you know, text file in the process recently, there's always a lot of questions.
If you don't take it from the property line on the front of it, on the side and rear, and somebody's got twenty meters on the rear of the property, and he wants to divide that, he can't, because property value has gone down, and somebody doesn't wanna be fifty feet from the solar array. So that property, if it's not participating, the value of that property is gonna be less. So I think we've gotta protect that.
Yeah, yeah, it should certainly have a setback, a minimum setback, yeah.
Right, and that's what I'm saying, if you have six hundred from the line, rather than from the house, that allows that non-participating people to subdivide that property and do it in a reasonable way that people will be wanting to move it.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, we can, if you want six hundred feet across the board, I mean, six hundred feet just to make everybody aware is larger than any ordinance I'm aware of currently, but.
Well, we're talking six hundred because that's.
Right.
Within the, so.
Yes, yep.
If that moves down to something else down the road, so be it.
Sure, sure.
But just for sake of conversation.
Yep, yeah, I mean, we, we can make that consistent for any property line, so that can be from your rear, your sides, or your road right of way, and then it's consistent.
Do that exist in you?
Yeah, I, it would be, I mean, in the sense, I'm stretching my head over, because if the sound of a roadway, it's six hundred feet in the direction.
Yep.
That also gives animals more space to walk around.
I remember the water.
Yeah.
And, and yeah, I mean, the other thing, you know, that may end up happening with those setbacks, sometimes a full property, we've seen this where a, a part of a property will still be farmed. Um, so the other thing to think about is if they wanna, you know, maybe farm, you know, maybe you put your buffer in, but maybe there's a section from that six hundred feet that can still be farmed. Um, you know, we talked about ag preservation and, and ways of doing that, we wanna make sure that, you know, can they, can they turn up compartment around? Um, you know, can you get, can you get equipment in there to, to utilize that land? Um, and those are some of the questions to you that might, might come up, and maybe they'll extend the setback further so they make sure they have that turning radius for a couple of passes. But those are sort of things to, to think about as well.
Yeah, and if we're talking from six hundred feet from the fencing, there's going to be on the non-participating side, um, screening perhaps.
Yep, they're, yeah, they're.
And the fencing, so, yeah.
Yep, yep. So, okay, we can do, it actually simplifies A and B, so you wouldn't necessarily need both, that you can state six hundred feet from, from any property line, with the exception of participating property lines. Does that sound good to everybody now?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, definitely, you gotta make sure that's.
Yes. Like I said, I'll be sending the, you know, I'll give, I'll give you a draft with.
Oh, yep.
Okay.
Woo, okay, so.
So four?
We done did.
So it's like a four we're done with for now. Okay.
I'm getting hold, is there any left here to talk?
I turned it way down with your turn.
Oh, my switch is. I got kind of soaked, you know, the rain.
Feeling warm.
Thank you, Dan.
You're welcome.
Okay, um.
Some sections, uh.
Yeah.
This is your screening, landscaping, and visual impact section. So you already had some standards in here that talk about screening and buffering, installing evergreens or native vegetated plantings, um, in your current ordinance. And this primarily focuses though on, uh, the perimeter within a hundred feet, uh, from the residence of or property boundary, uh, shall we screen, you know, receive screening. Um, the way we wrote this, we tried to specify, and we kinda talked about how the wording is standard, so we tried to specify, you know, what a burn or screening might look like. Um, burns have a minimum of three feet in height at minimum with a one to four horizontal slope. Um, after talking with our, we can, we can require the, you know, burn to be higher, the reason why we included a slope in there is if you want that vegetated. Uh, please don't do well, uh, when you start elevating those without a, a, a shallow slope behind it, you're gonna dry out.
Yeah, right basis.
Erosion issues, et cetera, so that's why we included that. Uh, we talked about the size of evergreens, so they're, you know, you know, how can you buy them off the shelf for nursery? Uh, you, for minimum of four feet in height for, uh, evergreen trees, native deciduous trees, two inch caliber shrubs, two feet in height, common sizes that you can buy. If you provide a minimum of this, you know, you're not getting, yep, baby trees, something that's going to be villain for, um, things that can be picked up off the shelf. Uh, we put in spacing, so we, you know, requiring no, no less than, or no greater than fifteen feet apart on center for deciduous trees, uh, thirty feet for, uh, or fifteen feet for evergreen trees, thirty feet for deciduous trees, and shrubs seven feet. So it allows whoever the advocate might be to sort of land that, and allows the planning commission to, you know, decide whether that's gonna be sufficient, it's gonna require that they submit a visual, um, a visual representation of what this would look like. Um, just, it's, it's a common requirement now for any of these types of installations, you wanna know what the screening's gonna look like when it's planted, when it's whole grown.
Yeah.
Um, so that would be, that's something that we added. Um, we can put in a, a, you know, HAC level, something, you know, eight percent, hundred percent, eight percent's gonna be common in a lot of landscaping chapters, that allows for a twenty percent open or gaps between, 'cause that everything typically fills in all the way, or maybe different way through, same direction. Um, and then, um, it also allows the planning commission to require screening along road rights and way. Um, your current ordinance doesn't allow that. Now, we can just require that, if that's something that you wanna do. We, here it's an option, so if the planning commission, um, thinks that it would impact the natural view of the roof, or the landscape, they would, they would be required to put in the same screen they're required to put in between the wall. Um, the other thing that we can do is if you wanna require screening between any property that's not participating, or any right of way that's not participating, you can do that. Um, there's a couple of different options there, that's sort of how we're gonna see, so, thoughts on that?
I have a question on this. Um, it, it says, within a hundred feet, does that dim or copy from the tree?
Yep.
But is it, so the screening, like, we got six hundred feet, then you got screening at a hundred, not by the fence, screening that isn't by the fence, right?
So the screening would be outside of the fence, do you wanna?
Right, it's outside, but I mean, you got six hundred feet, it were, you're fine then, then we got a hundred feet from property line, then the screening is not, won't be directly by the fence, right? Do I see that right?
You don't want it too close, because then the animals will go with, then they'll jump.
Okay, 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 it's gotta be, okay, okay, that's, I was just questioning that in my mind.
Yeah, so this, this talks about, yeah, so any, any property line, the way it's currently, so this is how it's currently written in your ordinance, if we, this is something that with your six hundred foot setback, we will probably need to adjust this. Um, but.
We could go five hundred feet, and then, uh, that would be a hundred feet from the fence.
Yeah, so if you want your landscaping to be closer to the fencing, closer to the project versus closer to the property line, um, you'll probably work that such that it will, you know, it will remain closer to the, to the project. So, um, most are probably gonna do that anyway, but you can specify that, and that's fine. Um, I guess the question I have is do you want this only from the residence, you know, residential property boundary, essentially, or do you want this from any non-participating boundary? Do you want this automatically from the road right of way?
Well, you know, you think about the roads, and then you think about when we have a snow event, there are black acids that are gonna happen. And if you only have two hundred feet, that's gonna be a mess. It's gotta be one hundred and that, um, yeah.
That's why I was wondering if it should be closer to the fence.
Yeah, but what he's asking is do you want it to only be a hundred feet off the road, or do you want five hundred feet off the road, just off the road?
Yeah.
Yes, we would probably want it closer to the project.
Okay.
It's just gonna revive more, I mean, mostly, like I said, most places are gonna be probably doing this anyway, because they're trying to screen the project.
Right, right, because we already know, um, you can't really have trees too close to the road, we got ice on them, they don't want it too.
Both shading and, yeah.
Yeah, you don't want it too close to the road.
It's just like with, it's just like with snow fencing, on farm fields, if you put it too close, your, your drifts are gonna be over the road, you want, you want that setback at a decent distance. So, yeah, no, of course. Um, but we'll require it to be at a certain number of feet of the fence, it is how we'll, we'll, right, and we'll figure out, I'm gonna talk to our landscape architect to figure out what she thinks would be good spacing for that. Um, obviously, if you're gonna put in a burn, there's gonna have to be a gentle slope anyway, it's gonna make, the width is gonna depend on the burn.
We might wanna talk to the road commission too about what they would like to see, because they're gonna be plowing, and snow is gonna be driving somewhere.
Yep, yep. But, yeah, so, uh, the other question I have then is do we want automatic burming, screening for your road prints? So currently your ordinance doesn't have that. We provided it as an option in this draft, but we can, you can require it if, if it's something that you wanna require.
Everybody talks about how they love to see the rolling hills and everything, and if we burn it, and if the panels are up to them.
Yeah.
And, um, probably that would be to the benefit of all those that.
Yeah, we can certainly do that. Um, we've seen that in other ones since, so, do you want it, uh, screening not just from residential property, but from any non-participating property? Is that, I think, senses that we have across the.
So how does that change the wording of the five?
So.
Or does it?
It does.
Okay.
So, we're gonna be talking about any non-participating property boundary, any road right of way. So this will probably have, this will have to be changed fairly significantly. Um, so we'll update this, and for the next, next workshop, we'll have, we'll have this polished. But I've got, if, off the cuff, language writing, just number, number of great things.
Don't worry about this, cause I just put it down at the screening, what you said from any, I just.
Okay.
And then, then, do we just do all five?
Yep, we simplify it actually.
Oh, okay.
Yep, yes.
Yeah. We have a, talking about the, uh, kind of trees that we, yeah, you know, a hard question to.
Yeah, yep.
Wouldn't it be wise to talk to him, find out what kind of native trees or shrubs would be the best? I mean, you can plant some trees and find out the older there, right?
Right, right.
If you go up the, the native findings, and then have them calculate out the spacing based on maybe for some coverage, to add some cap for wind and whatever.
Yep.
By the, but up against each other.
Right, right, yeah.
So that spacing would be dependent on the tree and the height and the tree.
Yep.
And for that.
Yep, and, and, you know, anytime you, so, when I had her look at these spacings, so your fifteen, your thirty, your seven, um, those are all pre-general spacings you have for evergreen tree versus a deciduous tree. Most of your, your solar companies are mainly more just planting evergreens?
I would say deciduous.
It, they, you don't wanna plant.
With the.
Tall, yeah, you're going to, you're not, you're not going to get a lot of value output. They might throw a few in lower, below the burn or something like that, but primarily you're going to see evergreens.
Yeah, those don't grow quite as wide as deciduous. Solar goes the, the gap is the best.
Yep, that's why you have a fifteen feet, so they'll close up. Usually they'll stagger them, is what you see. But, yeah, it, it, you can get into which types of evergreens, but a lot of these, we're going to work with usually a local nursery to know exactly what grows well here. Again, you can get into requirement. I have a look, your landscaping section in your ordinance might have a list of recommended trees. It just not, okay. So we can, I can talk to her about that and maybe we'll include something. That may be something that you want to add to your ordinance.
Wherever.
Yeah, wherever, yeah. Sometimes there's a list of recommended trees that, you know, I use, we use in our ordinance. Or it's the trees, trees that are, you know, not.
No, right.
Yeah, things like that. So, yeah, we can look into that though.
And if our efforts to try to cover up the messy, what grows is a shrub. Shrub's only on the tip of the tree, it wouldn't die.
Right, so sometimes it's, if they plant them low to, to, you know, if the bottom of a, of a, bottom of a evergreen tree starts to die off, they'll put shrubs, shrubs will end up. Ultimately, you as a planning commission will have to decide and then approve their landscaping plan. So at that point, you could always bring in a, you know, after us as a planning consultant, review the application. And usually a burn will have a landscaping architect or an, or an old tourist on staff to be able to look at the.
We'll take them at four, like we should in state extension.
Yeah.
Yep, so, you know, you could ask the, hey, this is what, this is what's going to grow well. Yeah, you can say, this is what's going to grow well, this is what we want you, this is what we want your plants, is what else your extension says. You can do that. It's a special use. If you have the ability to put conditions on a project and, and reasonable conditions, then I would say that that's a reasonable request. Especially if, and some communities, they, you know, they have too many maples. So they say, hey, we, you know, you put your property with maples, you have this issue, can we, can we just drive or stay here? So, yep. Okay. Any other questions, comments on your screening lines, they can reach the link back? All right. So section six and seven, we just placed some labels on these, so it does clear which sections are addressed. So your ground cover, which talks about which plant, maybe you're in solar panel rows. You're talking about your native pollinating plants. It did change the language. Security and fencing, we left the same. Also, that run fine, that's what we've seen in a lot of ordinances. We just included it so that it's easier to find. Sub, any questions on those?
Um, oh, does anything care, any subdivision or structure? Okay, never, never.
Okay, good, good. So I'll send this gentleman, can I always come back and talk about something later if he finds something that you want to discuss? Subsection eight, so this is citing and prime farmland preservation. So if you notice in the Mason County example that we provided that you can exclude PA 116 property. The state agency allows, you know, if you as a local unit can exclude it for a property that, you know, would be cited with a solar energy installation. You can also exclude things like prime farmland, which USDA has maps, you know, providing a map of your township that includes your prime farmland, farmland of local importance, farmland of unique importance. These are all definitions related Natural Resources Conservation Service and USDA.
So, yeah, that was going to be my question on the map. It was, so we could go to the USDA site and find what the definition of local importance?
Yep, and we can even include these definitions in the draft. There are a couple of the definitions which we would recommend that we would include in a future draft that we'll get to. We talked, looked at a couple that we both think should be included. When, you know, when we talk about the next set of edits, we're going to get into some of your definitions. Some of the kind of, you know, meat potatoes, planting and zoning. But, yeah, so basically the way we wrote this is it would exclude, so there's a conversation about farmland preservation, you know, particularly prime farmland. It's discussed in your master plan as well, you know, not allowing for non-AG uses in prime farmland. So it's, you know, supported in your policy, not penalized. So the way we wrote this is it would exclude lands that, you know, prime farmland for the definition of this ordinance is anything that's in PA 116, which we were not able to get specific properties. They wouldn't give us the address, but we have a list of agreements. So there's quite a few.
You have a list of property owners.
They would not give that.
They have, but.
Or the address.
No. No.
The agreement number is all I got.
The agreement, oh, okay. They're internal.
Yes, so they could not give that to me, but I do have a list of, there's a few that expired in 2021 that I don't think are reviewed. And there's a lot, there's quite a few others that have very, that have expiration based. I can pull this all out of the spreadsheet here. I can send you the whole spreadsheet that lists all of them. But there are quite a few parcels that list the acreage, so we know. But that would be excluded in this draft. And then also anything defined as prime of local importance or unique importance.
What's the rate of anything in color?
Yes.
Sure, one thing, I was skimming Michigan State, you have that.
Yeah.
Higher quality.
Yeah, the, the guide.
And there's exceptions to the PA 116.
So they do recommend, so that guide is, that guide is, is written to provide sort of many, a menu of options. So the state did amend PA 116 to allow for solar on PA 116 lands. Previously, it was excluded, but the state was allowed for it to happen. Now you as a local unit can decide, well, we still don't want to do that because we want to protect our front farm. Talking to Bliff, he was fine with that. Mason County did this, a few other places have done this. Some places will still, you know, still allow it. It just depends on your local, local policy, local, you know, environment, what your residents want, et cetera. So, yeah, you can exclude it or not exclude it, the state enables. Yeah, we talked about that a little bit briefly in the first meeting, whether or not that was allowable. It seems that, that it's. Is this something you, so, you know, we, we include this for a discussion, for what's in your master plan? Is this something that, that you support, is this language that you think is, is reasonable? Is it fairly, you have, you have quite a bit of prime farmland.
Well, when you say prime farmland, by the pale green, or you're talking about everything that's on?
Yeah, the pale green is prime farmland. Others are of local where you make it important. And that usually has to do with the type of local crops that are grown on it. I mean, I'd have to pull up the definition is, I'm not going to offer a copy.
Does that change, does that change the top tier of the category?
Yeah, region to region, it's another thing.
So what's, the dark green on this land may be different criteria than the dark green somewhere else?
Yeah, there's a better, and I'll try to provide a better explanation in the future, if you're, if you're curious. You can pull it right up from USDA. Natural Resources Conservation Service has a list of definitions that they use that you can look through.
Was that during the soil survey?
Yep, the soil survey was written down in the eighties. Yeah, it was a, a law that was passed to protect farmland from federal, federal action. And so they, they went through it mapped.
That was also when there was lots of money for planning.
Yeah.
Uh, not for implementation, not planning.
A lot of planning, but dollars and this, and stuff is needed for this thing to be asked.
So. Yeah. I'm surprised there's so much close to the water, again, that's the local.
And, and again, too, I mean, these are, they're, they're methodology, I guess, um, some don't agree with it. There's probably in the soil survey, but it, it's a resource that's used in planning pretty frequently, especially in master planning, identifying districts that might have strong requirement, preservation protections and zoning. Because at least identify where it is, it's very likely that your farmers know where, you know, where the best soils are. Like I, you know, like I said, we can see your farmers are going to know better than anybody else where the best soils. You know, they, and they may agree or disagree with this.
And like, since nineteen eighty, it's a lot of farming's done.
Yep, of course soils have been changing that much.
Right, and so I wish it was a map of how much fertilizer is put on.
Yes, up to the gams and breaking all of that.
Yeah.
Yep.
How much does it take to grow something?
Yeah, so. Anyway, so, yeah, we can keep that if that's something you want to keep. I mean, it does exclude, so if you look at your zone map, I mean, it is essentially, you don't have it here. Half of your ag selling is prime farmland.
Well, and then you, yeah, for active.
Yeah, again, not all of that is farm. I mean, if you look at your, if you look at the aerial of the township, your, most of your farming is in your, your prime farmland.
Yeah.
It, it is elsewhere, but again, like I said, if you're, over time, you can improve soils and so.
So what we could do is we could say limit the amount of solar installations on prime farmland.
Excluded.
Excluded, we can permit.
Yeah, you don't have to, you don't have to disallow it. It's just, it is supported in the management. So that was, you know, that's why when we discussed at our first meeting, that was one of the concerns. We figured this might be a good option if you were concerned about protection of front farm.
Is, is, is it done to do a percentage? To put a limit on a percentage of prime farmland?
You could.
I don't know how you would come up with a percentage, but.
You don't want to check it to a person by person.
Yeah, who, who really is going to define in a defensible fashion, prime farmland? I don't know, I heard all the discussions, but first question I would ask is, okay, you get a map, whomever generated the map, and you get a color coding that says, this is prime farmland. That was defined by whom? Did the state define it?
Uh, Natural Resources Conservation Service of the US Department of Ag.
Okay, so once they have said, this is prime farmland, that is a defensible position to take?
Yeah, it's defined and you have a resource for it. It's a federal agency, so it typically, yeah. I mean, this is, this type of information is relied upon in other remittances for.
So then I get.
Farming preservation in general.
Yeah, but then I get back to the question I think is bouncing around on the table. Can you want to in some way restrict solar from prime farmland?
Yeah, that's a question I would want.
Yeah, that's, that's the question.
That's a million, maybe two million dollars.
Wow.
The, um, clip has moved it this and it's been defended other places.
Yeah, so we talked about this a little bit, and, and he said, yeah, I mean, if, if the planning commission wants to go this route, you know, making sure that the, that the source of information in this case, because DA, is, is defined as to what that means. Again, we should probably define these in your ordinance as well if you decide to go that route.
Right.
Just to make sure that it's consistent with the federal guidelines, with federal definitions. Yeah.
What do you guys want to do?
When was that act created?
Originally it was created in the eighties, when that act was passed. As far as updates go? I don't know.
So that happened a few years ago.
Could be.
Yeah, they probably don't update all that often because, A, they don't have funding anymore to do it, but also the, the reason we should do it. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, their, their mapping service, I would imagine in some instances has done updates, but I can't speak for this, and it's something we can look into. If you're curious as to the last time it was updated, generally though, I mean, a lot of them are fairly old. And that is, that is a criticism of, of them, commonly, yeah. But in this case, it's just a, it is just they've been kind of tooling the toolbox.
I think we have to be careful with six hundred foot setbacks and if we decide to exclude prime farmland or PA 116 lands, that we're not excluding anything out of the township.
Oh, oh, I see. Yeah, yeah, and, and that is a concern as well.
Yeah, the six hundreds foot setback is going to minimize the impact of prime farmland anyway.
Yeah, very likely. I mean, and to an extent, you're, you know, you're, the thought process here too would be that if your farmer has prime farmland, they might not want to use that for solar anyway. That's what they're giving their use, but, yeah. But your, your six hundred feet would, you know, would naturally already begin to limit where, you know, which parcels given are feasible? Because your smallest parcels are not going to be feasible anymore.
And also, PA 116 is something that can change.
Yeah.
A property owner could say, I'm out of program, therefore.
It's voluntary.
Yeah.
Yep.
Getting so.
Precisely, yeah.
Saying it's excluded really doesn't.
There's a lot of the perception.
Yeah.
Well, and it doesn't matter because a, a property owner could end up agreeing with the state. So.
That's got to come across as a lot of way.
I hope so.
Okay, so I just, just because the attorney may think it's defensible, doesn't mean it would be tested. And, and I don't mean to promote or discourage something just based on that. I'm just.
Well, so can he then defend, if he has to, whether it's just our business.
Right.
Our business.
Yeah. It's probably easier to defend maybe the six hundred feet, that's the thing. In the actual, yeah, okay. So Nathan, how does that work for the end of the quarter? Is that something that's defensible, do you know?
Um, yeah, I mean, we've seen, again, you're, you're talking about land use impacts. So if your, your master plan talks about preservation, you know, green space preservation, et cetera, rural character, I mean, those are all things that, you know, providing for wildlife habitat. The mapping is included in that sort of type of policy hole. So I don't think that's unreasonable. I mean, there are states that provide animal borders for highways, provide, you know, passageway underneath or over them. I mean, there's, there's examples of this in other communities as, as far as greenways go around. Residential development and open space, providing habitats, I mean, those are all, those are all concerns that are, are common among, among townships, yeah.
I'm not sure if we need to limit anything, if we're putting in that six hundred for, for six hundred feet.
And that's totally fine, yeah. Again, this was a, this was a tool and a toolbox. If you wanted to go with less setbacks and implement this, I think if you were going to have your large setbacks providing protection, always, this may be a lot.
And then nine, um, I'm not sure. I'm just saying if eight is out of, off the board, then nine is that? Nine doesn't depend on eight.
No, nine does not depend on eight. Nine is another, nine is another sort of, you know, we're thinking about these as being many latings of potential options for you. Nine can go with eight or without it. Nine can go with eight or without it. This is a best practice that was recommended from the MSU Department of Solar Energy Guidebook. This talks about just making sure that this does not impact agriculture operations that could be on that property in the future, and then adjacent ag uses. So making sure that with whatever is installed, if it ends up being decommissioned, that the property can go back to agricultural use afterward. So it talks about, you know, limiting the types of footings, permanent foundations, preventing soil compaction, maintaining soils on site, maintaining drain tiles in ditches that were used in ag use, being maintained, existing grading, citing them so that, you know, maybe they don't, so they don't isolate. So say your farmer passes through multiple properties with their equipment to, you know, access different fields, those sorts of considerations are given in terms of site design. That's really what this whole section is intended to do, is to allow her farming to have it harmoniously with the adjacent to it, and that it can go back to use afterward. I mean, that's what you want. You don't want to put something on a piece of property and then have it never, you know, and be unusable for the future. I mean, you have, you have one of those questions already.
Yeah.
So, I mean, that's the whole, that's the whole point of that section. You know, you don't have to have all of those, and really, they're sort of a guide for the applicant. You know, provide satisfactory evidence that the site will reasonably be capable of maintaining operations. So they'd have to prove that to you as part of the application.
Yeah.
Considering those things.
Sounds good.
Well, Jared, if my personal thought on this is, if we move back to number eight there, I would rather go with the six, personally go with the six hundred foot setback than the farmland thing.
I agree. That way we're listening to all the community's concerns. We're not just listening to just one community's concerns.
On this agriculture protection.
Yeah.
Section, okay, so I'm just going to throw this out here. On protection of water, you know, water, do you have protection in there for like drinking water, like the well protection? Let's say that we, we don't know, because you don't, there's no, there's been no solar field for a hundred years. And often what happens in life is that you don't know that you're going to harm something until maybe thirty years, but now you find out, oh, it's time. Is there like some drinking water, perhaps like they'll test the wells surrounding solar field fields, or nothing like that?
We haven't seen, we haven't seen any communities do that. It's not something that's in the guidebook. Our understanding is there's not any expectation that that would be any more harmful than say, you know, I mean, house, if you think of like households and things that are, you know, houses are planted final. Talking about, you know, what fertilizers people put down. I mean, all of those things are sort of related to that same thing. If they're not to necessarily be harmful now, or they're even harmful in the future. We don't know.
Right.
And again, I don't know. But it's not something that's typically regulated. We haven't seen that in existing solar ordinances. It doesn't mean that you can't consider that.
Well, we did get burned with Hooker New Park, right?
Well, and you know, in the absence too of the drinking water, the drinking water, I mean, lead. You just, you know, it's, drinking water can, and importantly, lead, sorry. I mean, I don't want to over-regulate it, like you got to test it all the time, but, you know, maybe testing a well or a Pearson drain once every five years, at least then you can say, oh, we do have a problem.
Yeah, the Water Resources Commissioner does that.
Does he? Okay, I should, yeah, okay.
Do we know whether or not they're going to be using aluminum or galvanized steel for the violence?
I don't know.
We are speaking in general terms, and so not to anything specific. So if we want to require that, one or the other, this would be the place to do it, I would imagine.
I was just curious what thoughts on that were.
Well, as far as materials go of the actual, you know, panel installations themselves, I mean, it's almost just a viable land use concern, one way or the other. I mean, the materials wouldn't, I mean, glare, obviously. You don't want, that's a material concern that you would all have. You know, so using something that's, a galvanized steel isn't using a lot of cell towers and et cetera as a map finish. It's not true necessarily. So those are sorts of material concerns that you can have in zoning. But, you know, as far as, you know, what they're made out of, where they're disposed of, things like that. I mean, zoning ordinances don't touch that. They want it decommissioned. You know, they want all the materials removed. But where they, where they come from, you know, where they're processed, any of that, it'll be outside.
I think the only reason I asked that was, I would think that there'd be less issues, say with aluminum, than say with the galvanized material, because when you galvanize something, those are really nasty metals, like that coating on the other side. I mean, they're poisonous, you know. So do those reach out over time, or, you know, those, that was where my question was going.
I don't, I don't know.
That's why I was wondering.
We can, I mean, I can talk with Cliff and even some of our engineers and see if they have any recommendations or guidance, if that's something they, you know, reach out and know about. I certainly.
I do, because I think we would rather never have a problem if we can prevent it upfront.
And if you had galvanized steel, wouldn't it be sort of like a lightning rod?
Well, any metal.
Well, aluminum doesn't condense well. Aluminum foil doesn't get hot in the stove.
Seventy years ago, there was a couple companies who came here and sold us the gold goods. Not us here, but that's majority of our generation had that, okay? They sold us the gold goods. And seventy years ago, we're still feeling it. It will still be over the, within twenty or thirty more years. It only behooves us to say, let's take a little stronger approach towards this. Solar, solar systems have only been around about twenty years to a main ten quality. So we don't really know what's going to happen with that, when that starts deteriorating. So I think it would only be smart for us to say, okay, everything drains down to Pearson drain. We want to have preliminary testing done in front of us going into the drain as a base. This is what we have now. And then whatever comes up after that, if it's every year, every five years, or whatever, but somewhere along the line, we should have more testing done to see if it is happening, so that we can stop it before it becomes another problem like Hooker New Park.
I agree with you. I mean, I worked forty-two years in research. You can't get all the variables. You can say this is safe, but you don't know that one hundred percent down the road. You're better to test, you're better to routine test, and then if you got a problem, say, whoa, we got a problem. And before it affects, and we got families with young children here. I mean, this is important to me that we don't affect these families with their young children growing up around this, that we let at least test to make sure we are not harming, harming any of them. And it's, it's actually protecting the farmers too, because they don't want lawsuits either. Nobody wants lawsuits down the road here. We want to be safe.
Yep. Yeah, so in talking about this, so number ten, subsection ten, Wildlife and Environmental Protection, this talks about some of the things we talked about, the native species, animal movement impacts, protected wetlands, stormwater runoff. We can add something in here that talks about, you know, groundwater, groundwater protection as well. And again, as a, as a condition of approval, if you say, hey, we have, you know, groundwater concerns, you know, we want you to test it as a preliminary, and we also want you to test it at this point. That's something you can also specify. We'll include language in here that sort of enables the discussion, and then, you know, you can as a planning commissioner, you know, cope that problem. That's something.
And then maybe you can get the left components would be best, safest to go.
Yeah, yeah.
To require too.
I'm going to talk to engineers about it, talk to Cliff about it.
So you just reminded me that if galvanized footings are used in construction as a concern, maybe we should look at that in general, you know, because.
Lots of thinking about the amount if.
Yeah, the amount.
Project goes in.
Yeah, I don't know if they're using.
Common, or what's commonly used in fencing?
Yeah, I mean, galvanized fencing is common, and like I said, cell towers, there, particularly in our real estate land. Bridge components, railings.
Okay, the nine A, is this saying that the ground mounting of panels? That is, is it required not to be a mounting that requires a footing?
So what this is doing is asking them to consider utilizing these types of footings instead of permanent, or providing information that will be able to be removed or prevent soil compaction. So this is language that's certainly from model ordinance. It's not something you have to do. You know, there are certainly footings that are shallow enough that they can remove them at the end of the project. It's, I think in this case, they were primarily concerned in soil compaction. And removing soils in order to place foundations versus, you know, maybe something that gets screwed into the ground or de-placed into the ground that doesn't disturb the existing topography and soils as much.
Okay, that's what that is designed to do. Does that get, does the reasoning for that, does that need to address elsewhere else?
Just again, nine above, it sort of provides a little bit of an intro. Discussing minimum impact, minimizing impacts on agricultural production through site design and accommodations. Considering the following protective methods and provide status for category evidence to the planning commission that the site will reasonably be capable of maintaining ag operations or return to ag production upon decommissioning. So, you know, it would be something that would be required necessarily, but you could ask them, okay, at the end of decommissioning, you know, we would require you to remove your footing. And place, and place soil back on top with, you know, in lieu of them not using devices like this. So it's supposed to be sort of a guide, and this is what our, our expectations are. Our expectations are that you will just consider utilizing these protective methods or something similar, your own methods that protect ag, so that this can be returned.
Yeah, I was going to say, certainly we've always assumed that way that decommissioning would need pulling up all this.
Yep, yep, but I, yeah. I mean, that's the expectation. There are certainly methods that can be used that would prevent.
Maybe having to put them in.
Yeah, I mean.
Other ordinances add where I've said the footing is down to three feet, that'd be removed.
Yeah, yep. Yep, and we can, we can certainly add something like that.
Sure, the farmers don't really appreciate that when they don't write up their.
Yes, yes.
Susan, I'm sorry that I didn't take.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Cliff. Spend as much time as you can.
Are we good with ag protection? We, Tom started talking about wildlife and environmental protection.
Yeah, we're adding a bit of the specific.
Ground law. Yep, yep, we can do that. Are you otherwise good with this language? So I know that those were the primary concerns. I'm missing.
Well, let me ask, how does this, it says maintaining existing grading and much of practical.
Oh, in nine?
Yeah, yeah. Is that, does this address during construction and movement of soils, preserving the topsoil somewhere so it can be put back down?
Yep, so that's stated in here as well, under, under land clearing. What this is trying to do.
Oh, the next eleven.
Yeah, what this is trying to do is we've seen, so in an installation in Indian County that we helped the township review, that installer left the topography as is and installed the panels with existing, I mean, they did not go through and, you know, followed it flat. They left it as is, which was, you know, really preferred. The only grading that they did was as was required by the Water Resources Commissioner in that county to do strong water retention injury. So this is encouraging existing grading, topography to stay, so you're talking about your rolling, your rolling farmland that you're talking about. That would be, this would be permanent preservation. Is based safe and encouraging, that's what they.
Yes, thank you.
And keeping forest topsoils on site, which number eleven specifically states that topsoil moved during site prep cannot be removed from the property. Because it, you see, the same thing in gravel like operations, they'll sell it.
Yeah.
So we want to prevent that from happening. And then it makes reuse in the property or the goal. Any other questions on these sections? Land clearing, we included this, or I think this actually may have already been in ordinance, but we created it some section so that it was clarified. You know, land disturbance or clearing shall be limited to what is minimally necessary for the installation of the system. So now just coming in, if it is a wooden, now that, you know, we necessarily have to install on a wooden parcel, but if it is, that they will leave as much as they can, and then also again, leaving topsoil on the site so that it's not removed. Flowing thirteen, these are just little housekeeping items, including large, changing freestanding ground mounted to maintain consistent terminology. Same in fourteen. In fifteen, we specified that a site plan should include a modeling sound isoline extending from the sound source. So your inverters on the property are going to be primarily what would make noise. So having them submit a sound study or something to indicate what your sound isolines would look like as far as that's the level goes. The other thing that we can do, and you can do this as a condition of approval, but you can require a sound study before construction and then after construction. So you set a baseline for what your typical background noise is, because background noise impacts sound. Water, birds, they're all actually much louder than a sound study, you think there. And doing that at different times of day, so depending on traffic and everything else. That's something that you can specify more. You know, we can write a little bit more here, but we've seen that commonly done as more of a condition of approval. This is what we'd like to see. We'd like to see you prove that these are.
Can we ask that the inverters be placed in a soundproof booth?
We haven't seen that. They would do this if they weren't able to comply with your, with your noise regulations, but at six hundred feet, I don't think you're going to have an issue. They're going to probably put them in the center of the site. You could require that they be placed in the center of the site. Most are going to do that anyway, because they have their, get a module or comply with your, with your sound rise at the property line. But, yeah, I mean, I think they, they do need to dissipate heat, so that might be a good engineering question, if you wanted to do something like that.
Would the manufacturer of these units have that as far as their specifications?
Yeah, so that's.
So they know going in what a rough number is going to be.
Yep, yep, so that's how they, my understanding from other operations and other applications we've seen, they know what the spec is for how loud these things are, and they use that in their modeling. Yep, but, I mean, they'll do a, and they'll, you know, employing efficiency, we've seen them, you know, at the end of the, just to confirm that the study's correct, at the end of the, you know, at the end of the project, before and after, they do sound study to prove that, you know, there's no, there's no noise in, I mean, in the property line. But like I said, with the setbacks that you've, in that township in particular, their setbacks were the size of, were forty feet. So. So they were more concerned with that.
And as you said, a pre and post sound study could be set as a condition of a special use.
Yep.
So if we get a specific site plan and there's some doubt whether the 600 feet is enough to, to cover it?
Yeah, because at 600 feet, if you have those centered in the property, they may be absolutely easier on the property line. I don't know, but, yeah.
But assuming that it did not pass, would that be a condition for the assets?
Yeah, they, I mean, they, if they were in violation of that condition or in violation of your ordinance, they're gonna have to fix it. Yep, and at that point, they might have to put in some hard screening like the law or something like that, yeah. Yep, yep, I mean, they have to comply with your conditions of approval, so, you know, if they're in violation of their special use permit. So they're gonna have to, you have the, all the tools and your ordinance are ready to, you know, to manage that. Same thing in 16 through 18, just a little, including large to try to differentiate between your different types. 19, additional supplemental materials, so we did include some additional items here that weren't specifically outlined. You want to see fencing, again, some modeled sound isolines, drains, wetlands, bodies of water, landscaping. These are all things that we want to make sure that they include. Under 19, D through F, we did not modify that. Those are all things that I think you had talked about before, you know, construction lease management plan, you know, how, how they were going to get rid of all of that, maintenance plan, decommissioning plan. I think those are all things that you talked through initially. With all of this, we, you know, unless you have any concerns, we think we were kind of really good, so we didn't
Yeah, it looks like this incorporates some of the items that we originally proposed for amendments.
Yep, yep, yeah. So yeah, some of the lists that you concerned you had, you already had included in your ordinance. So if you see that we changed something, it's, it was already there. But if it, you don't think it goes far enough, or you think it goes too far, we can, we can discuss.
Well, I mean, like in D, I don't know if the existing has that. There should be no onsite storage of broken or malfunctioned facilities.
That was in a proposed amendments that never got passed.
Okay, so I included all of that from December. But I have the impression those were adopted.
They were not.
Okay, so all of those from December that you talked about, we included in the draft.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah. They're just not outlined as my changes, because I have the impression they were adopted. But if they're not, they're in here.
Yeah.
So we would, if you were to adopt this, you would adopt that, and you would also include.
Yeah, this is the one that is adopted.
Yes, okay, well, they're, they're in here.
Okay, very good.
Yeah, yeah, all of that is in here. So it's like a 20, this is regarding emergency personnel, so you talked about
Excuse me, one moment, please. I don't see anything in here about repurposing. Did you run across any of that?
So, yeah, so you're talking, I wanted to get clarification on this. Do you mean like re, they call it re-electrification or re- So if, if panels were to start to fail or be obsolete, that they could repower it with new panels? Like that sort of thing? Yep, we can, we can include a, I mean, they'd be allowed to do that as sort of amendment maybe, but we can specifically include a section in here that states that they can re-electrify it so that it can extend its, you know, life.
Wouldn't that just be maintenance?
Yeah, but it, it clarifies, so if the zoning administrator, you know, 30 years down the line, has a solar company come in and say, hey, you know, we wanna, we wanna replace all the panels, that way they don't have to necessarily, you know, if they're replacing them with the exact same or very similar sized equipment, it would allow them to do that without necessarily bringing it back to the planning commission or through the whole process again. And it also encourages them to, you know, maintain their system. But, yeah, I think the, in the guidebook, it's, I think they call it a re-electrification. We can include that section in here if that's something that we'd like to do. I wanted to, I wanted to know, kind of if that's what you meant by that comment.
Yeah, it was at the end of 30 years or whatever this life cycle's gonna be. Obviously, the technology's gonna be a lot better.
Oh, yeah.
And things will become obsolete. And would they have the option, well, again, going through this whole 90 yards again, and just say, okay, I wanna jerk those out, put these in. And it'd be more than just a, a maintenance type thing, it'd be
Yeah.
Re-mudding the wheel, actually.
It's like the silos that they have available now. You can get six on, what is it, 10 acres, and it does the same thing as all the panels?
Yep.
Oh, yeah, vertical.
Yeah.
Yeah. So in, in, we, they know that, I mean, generally, depending on the panel, they know the lifespan of these. They do grade over time, they don't, they're inefficient. But they know what the payback period is and, you know, when they know that they'll need to replace them. It also depends on if they're able to sign, re-sign their lease with whatever electric utility that they're still selling to, you know, whether that's consumers, ETE, et cetera. So, you know, whether or not they decide to re-electrify versus decommission would be up to them. But you want to make sure that, that, I mean, if they're gonna, that they're capable of continuing to use it is a, is a best practice that we, that is recommended, yeah.
Yeah, because I was thinking there was something we had in the, prior to moratorium amendments that talked about if the replacement gets to the point of being a new system, that they would need to come back.
Yeah, yep, and we can, you know, if they're starting to, so say they need big racking to place the panels on because the sizing is different, et cetera. I mean, if you start, you know, for all intents and purposes, renewing the whole project, it's probably a desert to the back. Yeah, and we can try to specify that.
Okay, yes.
And clarify it, so it's not just panels being replaced, or not just a inverter being replaced or any other electrical equipment that they need, you know, it might be an update. Just similar to, you know, electrical substitutions you have when they come out and replace equipment or cabinets on a cell tower. Those are normal maintenance, equipment swaps, but if you're gonna be changing everything, putting in new footings, et cetera, I mean, that really might be us to come back to the planning commission.
I think that was something in MSU's guideline.
Yep, yep. Yep, yeah, flag goal, I think I, it's a good, it's a really good 101. And it, it's just, they did a great job with it. And it took, it took them several years to come back at it.
It took them three months, huh?
Oh, so emergency personnel.
Yeah, so we talked about this, and this is a concern of, of other townships that we work with as well. Making sure that your emergency personnel knows how to deal with, and mutual aid knows how to deal with putting out fires. To say there's a, a, you know, a lightning strike or something fails, and, you know, how to deal with that, how to shut the system off if they're the ones, the first ones to arrive, things like that. On emergency situations, so requiring the applicant or the owner to provide training to those, you know, whether that's in-person training or, you know, materials for training so that your fire department, police, everyone knows how to deal with that situation. And so this would require that of the operator or the owner. And then your services would be able to require that, you know, at least once a year.
The lithium batteries that are in there because the inverter phone, they go from DC to AC and they use the lithium batteries. And there have been tests with fires that they can't put out with water. So if you don't want PFAS.
Right, right.
So the training materials is essential.
Yeah, yeah, it is, it is, yep. Your, your escrow for security bond, that is all, you know, that was all written by you with your attorney previously. We didn't change that, we, we, you know, that all reads fine to us. If there's a concern that you have, you know, we can talk about it. You have an escrow policy, it's in your ordinance. You know, the, the township, sounds like the township or the attorney kind of work with the planning commission on site when those escrows are, the applicants are required to pay them. It's outlined, all outlined in your ordinance already, just so that they hear. You know, I know that was a question as to, you know, is the township liable for paying for an engineer or planner or attorney to, to, you know, review all of this? Should an application come in and, and that fall outlined in your ordinance?
I have one more question. On the last line of A in 22, an escalation factor for inflation may be included determining the amount of estimated cost of decommissioning. How do we determine that? I mean, maybe isn't like, shall be.
Oh, yeah, that was some discussion we had.
Yeah, and that was, that was a question I also had for you. You know, which sections did you, I, I actually do have a question for the attorney on this. We haven't been able to discuss this section. I don't know if this was something that, that he recommended, or if this was language that you had all talked about previously? Because again, this is, this is existing language in your ordinance.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, yeah, we first came up with the ordinance years ago, but
We may want to look at this, that whole section.
Yeah, brought to our attention that. Also, did, I don't know, we had intended to add something about any pre-construction cost to the township would be paid by the applicant. Is that in here?
That would all be covered, I imagine, over your escrow. You're talking about any inspections or anything like that? Or building, is it obviously like a building permit, you're gonna need, you know, I don't know if you're, doesn't building, building services?
The cost of site plan review and hiring the help to
Your court.
Oh, yeah, so all of that will be covered by the applicant, in the escrow.
That's, that's clearly stated, you believe in?
It's in your ordinance, yeah, yep. I can send you the existing section, but it, it outlines that any engineering costs, legal costs, planning costs, services will pay for by the applicant.
Oh, is the site plan review the challenge? Oh, okay, not specifically here, but in part site.
Yep, it's covered, so we wanted to make sure that was a question I had, that the township had an escrow policy, so it is outlined in your ordinance already. It sounds like there's a defined process for, for I know, I know you don't have a lot of applications come through, so it probably doesn't happen that often. Yeah, yep, yep, you have it, you're covered, it, it reads well.
Okay, because I know, I think it's mentioned again in the wind energy systems subsection.
I did notice that, yeah.
So it's, that, that section is redundant then to the site plan.
It, it is, and it's, it's, we can be redundant again, but we can do that. But, yeah, it is, it is covered unless you'd like to specifically cover it here.
We just have to remember that, you know.
Nathan, I have a question on B.
Yeah.
22B, the last sentence there, I'm sorry, my brain doesn't work on the same level that a lawyer does. Where the applicant takes out the security, it may be assigned to the property owner or system owner operator with notice of the intention. You gotta explain to me what that is.
This is Cliff's language. So I may even have a conversation with him because I'm not quite sure what that says.
Yeah, I thought I knew what that meant, but maybe I
You know, we, especially regarding, especially regarding your escrow, security bonds, decommissioning, those are not all sections we usually work closely with whatever the actual attorney we're working with. You know, we have language we like, but a lot of the time, they have different languages that they like. So that's why with this, let me talk to Cliff about it a little bit, I'll try to get some clarification. I assume he wrote it that way for some purpose. I mean, I think to me, this could mean multiple things.
Uh-oh, well, go on.
But he's the, yeah.
I just needed some clarification with that, because I couldn't grasp it.
You know
Yeah, we don't want the township then, then fishing area to be I don't want that part read, Frank.
Yeah, do you ask, that is, that, what are you talking?
Thank you.
Yeah. I think the rest of this, yeah, so the rest of this is just small, you know, again, including large where it wasn't specified, you differentiate. Including, again, just little formatting things, nothing that changed any content here in the rest of it. You know, your abandoning and decommissioning is, is pre-completed. In here, it also talks about, you know, removing structures up to three feet below grade and disposing of them properly, removing access drives, all of that is outlined. You're gonna have a decommissioning, any applicant's gonna have a decommissioning plan. And if you don't think that the decommissioning plan is satisfied enough for you to determine whether or not a standard is met, you can ask them for more information if they're going to have to submit it, so
I give a break on that decommissioning. 24A, where access drives and road beds shall be removed at the option of the property owner. They, they should just be removed.
Yeah, so in, in that case, that is specifically for if there is a road that a farmer might want to keep because that provides access to something, they could, the property owner would then specify, so I think
I, I also, bits of road put in that could build a subdivision, huh?
Sure, but, I mean, it's still, if they were to do that, they would still have to comply with your, with your ordinance.
It wouldn't, in order to turn that access road into a private drive, they would need to go the next step.
Or a county road, returning to a county road.
Yeah, they have to go through the county road commission either way. So I guess that would
Yeah, it allows the property owner the option to keep it. You know, the property owner doesn't want it, but
If they want it, if subsequent to a decommissioning, the property owner at the time wanted to subdivide it and use that, what formerly was an access road as a private drive, that would then be part of our land division application review.
So we're protected on, in a different manner?
I think so.
Yeah, yeah.
Above those, as legally should.
Yeah, if it's in ag zone, it would be dependent upon your density, use, land division. If you have protections in there for permanent preservation, if they can only have so many splits, all of that would still apply to the person. And, and whatever, whatever your ordinance looks like at the time.
Right, I was gonna say, that's for another day.
30 years from now, who else will be on it? That's all the changes that I have in this draft. I do have a couple of additional questions. I know that, you know, we, we kind of talked about maximum size with, and separation distances and whatnot. With the 600 feet, do we still want to, I think some of that's going to be limiting, the 600 feet is going to limit separation anyway, because we can be looking at, across the street is gonna be 1200 feet. Plus the right way? So, I mean, do, do, is maximum size something you still want to explore? We're, we're, we're still doing some research on that because it's not something that we've, we've seen. Separation distances is not something we've seen, but that doesn't mean it doesn't exist somewhere, so. Is that something that, you know, if you still want to consider, if you want to come back with some information on? You know, maximum coverage, some of those, I, we kind of briefly discussed this at the last meeting.
Yeah, mine would tell us just in the process, that's what we have that.
I think we should always look at other options, I don't have a problem with more information.
Okay, so maybe see what we can find and come back with it if there's something, yeah. Because again, too, I mean, a lot of what's been built prior to now, you know, we're seeing an increase in size of these things across the state, you know, fewer applications. You know, 200 acres, we've seen, you know, pretty common to see a 200 acre product. But, you know, when they're getting bigger than that in some states and some places, I mean, so. And then we are gonna do some work on a better differentiation between small and large systems. So we'll try to come up with some definitions. You know, if your farmer wants to put a handful of them out and on their property just to help power farm, you know, you enable that already, but we want to make sure there's a difference so that they can do that.
Would it make any sense to have one section that's just for rooftops?
Yeah.
Another for one parcel?
Yep, okay.
Do you empower that one household and, and one barn or whatever?
Yep. Right now, above a certain size, even rooftop or building mounted, you have those as a special use. We don't normally, we don't normally do that. Do you still want those to be a special use for building mounted? Right now, because if they're above, I think, 2,000 square feet of panels on a rooftop, and that could be like on an ag barn or something like that, that requires a special use. And it's not something we typically recommend, you'll still have standard And it's not something we typically recommend, you'll still have standards that'll, you know, they can't be, you're, they'd go through as a, usually as an compliance permit and your administrator would review it. But it would still be, there's still be compliance, you know, can't be above the rooftop, um, either there's glare concerns, they can't face certain things like that.
Yeah, that's something we gotta consider here.
Yeah.
Think about that.
I mean, I can come back with some language and have you read it, show you what we changed, um, but yeah, we're gonna do that and answer definitions.
I've had people ask if we could have the solar company install solar panels on homes as long as they're going to install anyway. Um, can they be required to install on homes so that the panels could reduce the burden of the electricity cost? Um, that was one, I was just wondering if we could put it in there. And the other thing is guaranteed property, uh, value retention. So that if it is, uh, right now, it's this much and a solar array goes in and the property value drops, can we require the solar company to compensate that person for their loss?
So, um, regarding the property values, Robbing, I don't believe so, um, that's not something we've, we've seen. I can have a conversation with Cliff about that.
Okay, please, yeah, he was sentenced ordinances from.
There was one in one of the sample order, not for Robbing.
They're from the East Coast.
Okay, yeah, your, your state, your state enabling acts are different from state to state, and sometimes those sorts of things are enabled in one state and not enabled or permitted in another. And some of them have been fought in ca, in case law, so this is gonna be a good Cliff question. I don't believe that's something that you can require in Michigan, but, um, I will talk to Cliff about that.
Thank you.
That may be again, something that is enabled in another state. Each state is a little different in terms of their planning and zoning, enabling legislation.
We get asked that question.
Yep.
Over and over, I have to ask.
Absolutely, I can, I would talk to Cliff about that.
It would be handy to know for other applications too.
Yeah, I mean, that, that comes up with, we, that question comes up with grab lining law.
Mm-hmm.
Um, because that's usually another, that big, big concern for grab lining is property value impacts.
Because there are uses that we can't deny, but we can restrict or deny.
Right, I mean, you have to, you have to allow for almost, you know, every use unless it's specifically preempted by a state somewhere in your township. You have to allow for it by law, you can't exclude a use.
Right.
As you know. Um, there are certain things that you can opt out of, like marijuana, but again, the state enabled, you will begin to do that, you can opt out.
Specifically.
Specifically gave you that power to do so. Um, for other uses, they generally speaking do not allow for that, so. Um, yeah, let me, let me talk to Cliff about the property value guarantee.
And about the solar panels on the homes.
Yeah.
Not participating.
So requiring that they, that they do that or?
Well.
Enabling, just enabling.
What the person that talked to me said is they're gonna be getting a whole lot of panels and they're gonna be reasonably priced and they're experts in installing them. Why not just put them on the homes of the non-participating properties that are adjoining so that they don't hate it as much?
So, so.
Well, also the same money on their electric.
Yeah, slow, I got a question. That's not something you enable with the lawyer.
That's an interesting.
But we have seen other operators go to all the neighbors before they've submitted the application and talked to them about providing that. And that's gonna be up to the, whatever public, you know, whatever policy they have regarding their, how friendly they want to be.
The applicant.
Yeah, and, and applicant, we've seen this happen though, we've seen where, uh, an installation went in adjacent to a private drive, there were about six houses. And I think they offered to put solar in the roofs of all of those houses, but that was up to that specific.
Yeah, that was the applicant did that.
Yep, the applicant did that.
And did that as a part of coming forward with their plan.
Yes, as a gift, and said, hey, you have. Yep, yep, and that's what they did, that was their, that was their approach.
That was very good, never.
Yes, so it just depends on an applicant or an operator, you know, whether or not they want to offer something like that, but we've seen that, we've seen it happen, I mean. Yeah, our example, they, they did that and they worked with all neighbors individually.
That's nice.
On screening, and even in terms of what type of additional screening they want on their property they installed.
That's very.
Sometimes you get an operator that goes above and beyond what your requirements are and works with everyone, and sometimes you don't, it just depends, so.
So it looks like we have, we have, I'm just looking at the.
Yeah.
Suggestions.
Yep.
The protect neighbor property values was one of the concerns.
Right.
We just did, um, protect a road infrastructure.
Yep, that thing is in here already.
It's being approved by the road commission board for submitting it to the very beginning.
Yeah, so I went through that list and sort of checked off things that were either already in it, um, or things that we added.
Oh, and that's what you started to tell us about.
Yeah, yeah, so, no, no, it's okay, so yeah, some of the questions I had were, were those items. Um, we already know we want to address all roads.
There's number eighteen.
Unsure property, uh, sure, no, it's not first. Yeah, so we're gonna, I'm gonna talk to Cliff about that.
Roads.
Yeah. Um, regarding roads, there was a section in.
I'll give you posters.
So it didn't address roads because it was addressing here somewhere, I'm trying to find it.
Yes, uh, it's up here, I just found it, number eighteen.
Okay.
We already have that in.
Yep, it was in there.
Okay.
Okay, your road commission's gonna, I mean, it, road, road, uh, damage was a large concern with wind turbines and, uh, cool gravels as well. Just due to the gravitransit and then they had the weight of a lot of that trucking, I don't think there's much of a concern with solar, but, um, that is already possibly addressed by. And the road commission would make them.
There is weight in the sound of these roads during the winter time.
Yep.
So if they're still constructing during the winter, there would be weight in this.
They're gonna have to comply, yep, road commission's gonna hold them to that. Having a sinkhole.
Well, it may have just made more potholes.
You connect enough of those potholes, you have a sinkhole.
Um, your liability insurance, it, it is addressing here, I'm gonna clarify with, with, you know, Cliff to make sure that, I had an initial conversation with him, but I've had questions since I wrote a lot of these standards, we're gonna, we're gonna have another call, but I think that this is covered. Um, I'm gonna make sure with him now that he's comfortable with it, I know what you're talking about, I think what is in here regarding the bonding, um, that is required for the security bond for the development itself is going to practically not check there. And Cliff will be the one to review that and submit it anyway, so he'll make sure that you are protected as well.
How about, no SES or FEMA identified flood risk areas?
Yep, we, that setback is, that setback exists.
Oh, that was, yeah, okay. That's a related setback.
Yep.
If I may, I'd like to go back to number twenty on AJ, talking about fire.
Yeah.
In of itself, it may not be toxic, but since I said it is fire, I've got a to-toxic residue, and I can only use a toxic foam to put out the fire. It's not gonna fire, put water on it quickly, cleans up toxic matter.
That is not covered in your fire department, they would have to be trained in terms of how to put that fire out. Um, as to what they use, I don't know, that's a good question. That's kind of a, that's kind of a maintenance and operations question.
We should probably make.
We would provide everything else, provide materials, training, whatever.
Yeah.
But we haven't provided for the residue, which, the panel may not be toxic as long as it's together. As soon as you burn it, you've got a toxic residue. And the other way can prevent it from going to other panels, as you, like on an airport, you should foam for a few, and that's a toxic substance.
Maybe we should check to see what Ohio's doing.
Okay, let me, let me look into that. I don't, I know for, I know that any ordinance I'm aware of, that is not gonna address, so we, we'll, we'll try to do some research on that, that's something that, you know, um. I'm assuming they store it, foam like that, or any, if it's required as training, they would know how to handle that, but.
Yeah, yeah.
And if there's special materials that are required.
Still no page for the removals.
Oh, yeah, I don't, I don't, I mean, I.
It should be impacted, it should be.
Yeah, if you have a fire like that, you're using foam, the firemen aren't gonna clean that up, that's gonna be, applicant's gotta.
Yeah, DK, your eagle or. And I.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The dinosaurs will be back.
Yeah, that more is doing.
Well, that may be something that, you know, again, I mean, you're, you, you as the municipality as far as a special use, gonna, you're still have to go through that process. So if something like that happens and they're not in compliance, you're still gonna have to go through your, your enforcement process, you may take not immediate.
Sure, sure.
So, yeah, but that's a good question. Those were a lot of like big questions, did you have? Did you have any others that, that you thought that I missed that we didn't address? You know, as far as like EMF and those sorts of things, um, a lot of that is all, you know, regulated federally, um, they're all required to be in compliance. It's so usually, I mean, I'm not a, I'm not an electrical or telecommunications engineer, so.
Yeah, I mean, I know, there's federal requirements, um, there.
Um, and they actually, units, the improvements themselves, yeah, yep, yep. Um, and we know that from, from, uh, our training, working through all of that with MSU, the, the guidebook. Um, you know, we can look into that further, but it's something that is usually deferred to federal state agencies. Um, they have, they have compliance permits, just like with cell phones, just like with any radio equipment, any electrical like that has to comply, not create any sort of disrupting frequencies.
Yeah, I like the way it's valid.
And I probably shouldn't, but.
It's scary, it's scary.
Um, yeah. Uh, has anybody, you know, you talked about your contaminated property, I don't know how complicated that is, that obviously you can't force somebody to put panels on it, but I know there was a question as to, you know, why can't we utilize that property? You know, that's a good question.
I have the answer for that. Oh, there's deep restrictions on that, on contaminated property that nothing can be done, you can't destroy.
Okay.
So you're in pounding and a violation, you can't do it.
Yeah.
And of course, Comores doesn't want lease and most.
And we don't know that they approached them, we were out of the loop there.
Right, and it's essentially you can't require them to, so, and if there's deep restrictions, that, it's not much you can do about that.
No, not till they clean it up.
No, right. Um.
Oh, yeah. It's a lot of coordination involved in that part.
And they would have to remove a lot of trees and they don't, and if you remove the trees, then you've got to remove the roots, and if you remove the roots, that serves the soil.
It does.
And it's a domino.
Yeah, yep, those sites are complicated, and figured that there may be restrictions on like that, so. But that was a question, so I.
We're actually, we, as a planning commission, we, uh, propose turning, uh, rezoning that contaminated property, transitional open space. So that any use, uh, future use would have to rezone it and then prove that it's cleaned up to the point of, for the new use.
For rezone.
Yeah, there's no portable water there.
No, yeah, it would have to be, yeah. And it may, it may, if they do clean it up, it has to be capped, like, you, you never know, but it may just be happening in that situation, so.
Yeah, we're asking for the landfills that were just, or holes in the ground with toxic oil poured into, we're asking for those to be removed, please.
And we have all the materials of the boom.
Oh, man, yeah.
Looks like.
Yeah.
So I was being sarcastic?
Yeah.
But, but there, there exists these non-invasive frameworks for solar panels, that's hopeful, yeah.
Yeah, I'm sure that, um, there would need any coordination as to how something like that would be installed. I know there's a, there's a old landfill in Grand Rapids that's been, it was a super fun site, it's been cleaned up and capped, they're talking about putting panels in those. But that is a nine-foot clay cap on it, so.
Yeah, yeah. Only nine, ours is twelve, in my intention. We got thicker clay or something.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know, I, but I, I do know there's a dab of reuse for those types of things, but the cleanup has to be completed first.
Mm-hmm.
Um, if you put a cap on it, then they can penetrate the cap, but not all the way.
Mm-hmm.
And certain uses like solar or, you know, space or things that can be, you can't typically plant trees, but. That's, Grand Rapids, things like that are.
That would be a good place for a cemetery.
Who knows, they sell a bunch of those.
She's been working too much. She needs a break, yes.
Well, um, we've, we've been at this for two hours, so I think I got through enough to get you to your next draft admission.
I think so.
We'll come back to you, do you want to do the similar schedule on Monday at one, because I still can't meet on your own.
How many weeks will it take you to do that?
A couple.
All right, so in two weeks?
Um, so any week, I want to get you your packet, so if it's two weeks, it'll only give you about a week to get it done. Um, so give me a couple, maybe three, um, Monday, that would be.
I'll give it a personal training.
Monday, the twentieth.
Twentieth can probably work for me.
We may not meet on May second.
What?
Yes. That is.
Well, we're talking March, twentieth, March twentieth.
March. One o'clock works for you? Nathan?
Yeah. Yep, then I'll give you two weeks to work on it, and I can get it to, I don't, I mean, we can do two weeks, but I'm not gonna be able to get you a week in advance, we can take a little time, because I like to get it five days at least.
And you've got to talk to Cliff.
I, yeah, he's busy, we're really busy.
Yeah.
And catching, catching, we, we were pulling up on that.
I'll bet.
Okay, um, I just check, make sure you don't pass that. We, our next work. We, our next work session will be March twentieth at one P M here.
Gotcha.
Thank you, though.
Yeah, but I can, if, you know, if we need to accelerate it after that, we can talk about that. I can put that on the timeline, so I wouldn't know what our plan is.
Bravo, bravo.
Go from there.
Thank you.
A lot of questions for him, stuff like that.
In the interim, without me then?
Um, he's going to do all the work. We can just sit there.
We can, we can work on the other stuff. That we're going to do.
If any of you do read it, the, the graph that I sent you, and you don't think we discussed something today, maybe route it through the chair, have her contact me. If something needs looking at.
Got your number.
Yeah. All right. So we'll try to, we'll, um, yeah, yep.
Okay. All right, well, thank you. And you made it.
Yeah.
Thank you for brave in storm, and it looks at least like it's a quick breeze.
Good point.
Yep, no, thank you. That's it.
If any commissioners need a, uh, couple minute break, go ahead. All good? You say that, I'm taking a little bit of a break now. Strike is over. Is there anybody out there that's parked to us? Any public comment? There's a list? I'll get it, I'll get it, okay. We didn't, we didn't think we'd use a list today, but if you all are sitting on break legs, that'd be interesting. You want to keep it down with Paul Allen? Yeah, Ann McCauley.
Hi, I'm glad you spoke about the six hundred feet. It's imperative that we give the six hundred feet there. My insurance agents, which from Brown Berrows is supposed to be here, but you can all check your own property lines. It states that, um, no homeowner's insurance will cover groundwater infiltration or movement, which is flooding. Your homeowners won't cover that. Currently master tag, and old brothers is finding that out. They're under a gag order, but they're finding that out. It won't cover us. You must keep six hundred. It's your responsibility to protect the rest of us, to keep a minimum of the six hundred feet. And also, it's not right that the farmers that are here, the ones, if they are able to use the solar panels, meeting the references. The people from Chicago that are, don't own the house, but own land, should not be allowed to put those. They should have to have a different permit, because they're not residents here, because our farmers do provide for us still. If they have land left over and they provide for our community, such as hay and grain, they should be allowed to make money before people from Chicago that own land that just bought it. It's like them putting their own power plant, because they're not even losing anything, they're just gaining. Our farmers are losing a way of life. It's a sad comment for our poor farmers that this is what they have had to resort to. But they should not allow, you should make something in there so the people from Chicago don't get to benefit from it. It's not right. So if we can save some of our farmers, they should be allowed to. And you're kidding yourself, a training video? You don't have enough firemen in this township, in Muskegon, to cover should something catch on fire. Training's not going to be enough. You don't have the bodies. It's just not possible. Call your local fire department, see what would happen. And you'll put our young men at risk, and women that work on those departments.
Can you say your name?
I have Ann McCauley. I live on Lehman Road. Yes.
I have a big house on Lehman.
Ally Goodrow.
Hi, Ally Goodrow, eight nine nine zero three drive. The time, energy, money, and patience expended on fighting or promoting the solar rating proposal is astonishing to me. Since as residents, we do not benefit on any of all. The majority of White River Township residents will sacrifice their property value, sites, health, and environment to serve outside vendors and businesses. If there is a demonstrated need for solar in this community, then this energy should be garnered for this community. I'm not an advocate for solar, however. Solar power is constituted as a green source of energy. But if you do a small amount of research into its dark production and manufacturing methods, you will find it relies on oil and a vast majority of the raw materials. It is also not reliable. And I took an excerpt out of an incredibly wonderful article called Mines, Minerals, and Green Energy. This is a quote. "Any significant expansion of today's modest level of green energy, currently less than four percent of the country's total consumption versus fifty-six percent from oil and gas, will create an unprecedented increase in global mining for needed minerals radically exacerbating existing environmental and labor challenges in emerging markets, where many mines are located, and dramatically increasing U.S. imports and the vulnerability of America's supply chain. This proposal goes against everything that is moral in supporting the residents and environment of White River Township." Thank you.
Scott Goodall.
Yep. I like to walk around when I talk.
Don't be a building, Scott.
I have ear problems deficit and, uh, eye glass problems as well. It happens when he gets sixty.
What, you want to borrow wine?
No.
I can't sue them either.
Uh, a little article from the EPA. It basically says, "Solar panels provide clean and renewable energy from the sun," right? By two thousand twenty, oh, two thousand fifty, this country is supposed to be a hundred percent green. That's the law. First problems with that, we have three types of solar panels that we speak. There's nylon poly. And then new upgraded version is now a thin firm solar. All three of them have components that are nasty for the environment. Then we go, what's talked about, at the end of the day, what are you going to do with all the trash that is generated by PV? Well... They don't have an answer to it. EPA says, "Go back to the manufacturer and let them deal with it." Certain states already, already had a problem with solar panels that don't last thirty years. One of them is California, maybe because out west, um, they get used more from maybe eight o'clock in the morning till six o'clock at night, or maybe from eight o'clock in the morning till nine P M. Here, not sure. Maybe they last longer. Don't know. The other thing that I, I deal with my professional career is I transport things. State solar panel anti-life policies by the EPA, considered hazardous materials. Michigan does not have policy. So if the solar panel breaks by human error, natural disasters, it leaks, it becomes a hazardous material product. You go to one, one website, EPA says the following, it has to have a time and a route to go from point A to point B. Michigan does not have a policy. As of yet, as on the websites, that I tried to come up with. Is that a problem? The one thing that the United States has dealt with for a hundred years, and it's not been taken care of, speaking of waste, is tires. We don't have a solid policy to take care of tires. There's two hundred and fifty million tires today that still have not been recycled. So, that's a problem. There's one state alone annually that contributes fifty-one million tires yearly that we can't recycle. There's places between, uh, United States and Mexico, there were three huge piles, they tried to come up with plans in two thousand eight, two thousand twelve, in Calcutta, but it just didn't work. There are places where you can take your tires to recycle, and that's great. They're basically a holding pen, because the man outweighs recycling product. Tires alone, uh, compliments of popular mechanics. Where do tires go? Asphalt, landfills, and the number one place where tires go in the United States, unfortunately, is they get burned for fuel. Unfortunately, the EPA says burning tires is much worse than coal. Lastly, I go to this. The Michigan Senator, um... Public Policy. It says, "Bright Panels, Dark Secrets: The Problem of Solar Waste." I call it the green halo effect. Actors have done an excellent job in marketing solar energy. But, they have a problem with manufacture disposal. It's a very interesting article, there's all kinds of quotes. Quartz, main product of, uh, solar panels. Uh, all kinds of bad things, carbon dioxide, sulfur dioxide. How do they heat, uh, quartz to make glass? They don't use solar per se, they use natural gas, propane. Really interesting fact. They actually producing one ton of poly silicone, leads to three to four tons of silicone triate, triate, triate. Tetrachloride waste. In fact, solar produces three times more toxic waste than can believe it, than you can. I don't know. The garbage, the landfills will be consumed with the end product. In the next twenty years, we're going to be throwing bad panels at our end of life two and a half times more than we are going to make solar panels. That puts a, a huge problem with landfills. There's only, there's already one state that already has declared that solar panels can be put in, um, regular landfills. Just go ahead and dump them in. Other reports, I've read it multiple times, that if you want to actually take your solar panel and recycle it, the cheap way is a buck. The most expensive way is ten to thirty-five times more than taking it. So it's twenty bucks, twenty-five bucks, thirty bucks to recycle. And what do you get out of a solar panel today? Three dollars at the going rate. You get aluminum, and you get some copper. That's what you get. Bring up what you guys brought up, very true. We've been burned by whom? Hooker, and now Dupont. Problem has not been solved, has it? Crazy. And yet, the do-gooders for the green halo effect believe. If you go to Harvard Business Review, interesting article, I highly recommend you reading. There's all kinds of articles. Not a fan of solar? If anybody in their personal time wants to reach out to me and ask me the following. Where I've been, what I've seen. Power generation systems, batteries, uh, new technology batteries. Solar panels, I dealt with it, uh, basically the last eight years. Fire? Not good. And yet, I think even in the trash realm of things, we don't have enough space to deal with it. We don't have the technology to convert it. And what you brought up, uh, was very important. The technology's going to change, right? So what you're going to do is, oh, we're going to come and change our panel. We're going, we want to prolong it, and then you're going to do what? With the waste. We're doing two things to make one thing good. We still have to have, um, fuel, they have to have diesel, they'll have to have gasoline, but yet, we're converting, we want to do this, this, and this. We're creating, we're spending more energy to make a green po- product. Thank you.
Bruce, I'm assuming, Carol? Did you sign that? No, okay, Bruce. I was just checking. Oh, Bruce. You don't want to speak, Bruce, Carol. Bruce Walker neck over, now you're doing it.
A couple of questions I had about this is, first of all, with the Dupont project, which I know you all say it can't be, you can't put the solar panels there, but... We gave our shot to Dupont, they took it, it messed the whole thing up, so we may have it for the new guy coming to town, because Dupont already, already used it all up. So that, that's the first thing I have to say. Then the second thing is, uh, when will the size of this project be brought up? Right now, they want seventeen hundred acres. I think Montague down, there's a hundred and seventy acres, somewhere right around there. And that seems to be a decent size, I would feel, with their Dupont. But, uh, I just think that we need to bring this thing in and see what we're really talking about, because you're, we're all right about this thing. The, the chemicals and the contamination is going to mess us up so bad, we won't be able to drink the water well, we move it. And that's probably the first thing I do if this thing comes to the town, is head on up, because I, I don't want to see the value of my homes out, and they have to live there. So that's all I got to say.
Megan Strublow.
She left.
She left.
Robert Court.
Yep. Hi.
Hi.
Robert Court, um, one oh seven, two six, Chase Road, right that way. I talked to Nathan about a question where he said, "Best practices." And I asked him, "Where do those come from?" Because if there was a case out there, and there's an issue, whether from one party or the other, what was the issue, where it was, when it was? And what were the recovery measures to resolve the problem? Very strict discipline, because he says, "Hey, these are best practices that they worked out. Show us the case study." Okay? So he was courteously enough to say that it's at the Joint Michigan State U of M, uh, you know, document. So I'll, I'll research that to see what they're saying, because this problem is nationwide, okay? Last week, Wednesday before the meeting, the six-thirty meeting, I ran across, um, as I'm doing my research. Here in Michigan, michiganadvance.com, the website, they need more pro-solar. But in the article, I've lived twenty-five years from, in Ohio. In the article, they're referring to what's going on in Ohio. In Ohio, we got a governor, whether he's Republican or Democrat, that governor's ramrodding solar through. Because they have a manufacturing facility in Ohio, ramrodding it through. So it's called the Siting Board in Ohio. And basically, the legislator is now saying, "Stop, slow down." We have a right, freedom to do what we want. But when it affects other people, then we have to evaluate it. My opinion, and I think, like, the state counties who say, or the state of Michigan should stay. I doubt whether state of Michigan will, but I think there's some counties here in Michigan that should be saying, before a solar company approaches a property owner, it first goes to the township or the county to be everyone aware of, hey, we're thinking about it. You know? If, if we built a fifty thousand unit apartment complex, six stories high, right there. If we built a 50,000 unit apartment complex, six stories high, right there, and my house is right here, it affects, see what I'm saying? And I'm not a not-in-my-backyard person. When I purchased my home in Columbus, Ohio, I live around railroad tracks that sometimes would be like four or five trains an hour. Because of four or five tracks, they're all busy. And it takes a slow down. And people would ask, you know, "Does that bother you?" I said, "No." You talk to all the neighbors along the tracks? No, there's reasons why. Because back of our house, alley, then there's a right of way that railroad just keeps wild. Our neighbor Bo's, we have a nice park area, grandeur in the middle of the city. And then tragically, at 10-point block that red sliced by a train. I mean beautifully sliced. That's how it is. But property value along the track, same house, is $100,000 different, like three city blocks. That's the impact of something like this. So on the planning the plots, so to speak, you mentioned about the fence line. I would like to propose that within your document, that you have what I call serviceability or service roads. Inside the solar factory, you have service road. Because if they butt these panels right to the fence, and they do repair on those panels right against the fence, they're going to start destroying all the, you know, wind screens or whatever you want to call it. So my opinion, and you can adjust your, you know, the fence line is a beautiful, hard, you know, distance between property and the start of a solar operation. I would say have at least a service road, probably a minimum of 12 feet, 16 feet to make sure trucks can get through. This would allow to assure that you don't approach in the zone that you want landscape or whatever. Another issue is what I call elevation differential. Basically, my home that I'm screwed with, I didn't realize this was happening. My back window, when I look out, I look out and it downgrades now. Okay? And you could pull up the elevation maps, there's a ridge along Chase. You know, just on the west side, maybe about 100 feet over. And sure enough, it slopes down to Old 99. And then you can, what I'm saying is, when I look out my window, I'm looking straight out. Summertime or right, you know, light, sunlight distance, it's going to shine in. Basically, I'll have to look at it all day long. Everyone knows if you go down Old 31 from the traffic, or you know, the stop sign, you see that it's a five-level house right at the bend? Go by that house. Those people from there, from here, probably the wall. The hill protrudes up, and it protrudes up, probably elevation wise about 40 feet. So please, you need to include it to your specifications elevation. Is it plus or minus one foot every x amount of feet? Because this is a major issue in Pennsylvania and Virginia, which are very hilly country areas. People are saying, "Wait a minute, you know, it's 400, my house would have to look right into it." So please, you know, take note, you know, service protection, making sure they stay within the playground, you know? And then also elevation differential. Because we can talk all day long. On the tree height, I would specify a minimum 12 feet. Why? A four-foot tree, I planted 20 years ago. You can go to Google Maps, look at my property, and you will see for the past 20 years how long it took to get to a height where I no longer see the trains. I did that not, it's not to see the trains. But on the other side, it's industrial building, it gets graffiti, city finds the people, they paint it, and sure enough, the next day it gets graffiti. So it's a barrier that blocks it. But it is quite fine, but it took 20 years to get to a height that I no longer see. I'd say a minimum 12-foot height. Maybe 10, but 12-foot. Lot of other issues. But let's go back to that recyclability issue in water. Think about it, these solar panels are going to be in very harsh environments. I'd like to see what the main factors warranty in what we call environmental testing in automotive. We take cars and we bring it. I mean, if you own a particular vehicle, we actually dump the car and make sure it runs. When you dump the car, you have a lot of electrical running through there. It better be just right. And why I'm sharing that is, I don't see the recyclability, much less the quality testing that these solar panels go through. Is it good for five years, 10 years? And a gentleman mentioned about Alucard Homes. They're having problems. They get intense heat. Here, you have extreme weather vulnerabilities. Today, you know, ice. So you go from a minus 20 degrees Fahrenheit all the way up in South, if it's city out in the field, you can get up to 140, 160, sometimes 200 degrees. How sealed are these solar panels? Because inside these solar panels, there's a lot of toxicity. If you seal these solar panels to prevent water intrusion, how do you vent it in the summertime when these are extreme heat? I remember back in the days, we used to have windshield blowout of vehicles. You know why? Because we were trying to get the vehicle, car, so sealed that when you slammed the door, sometimes the door was slammed back open because there's what we call a drafter that sort of vents out when you close a door. Well, what's happened was, these cars were getting so hot, windshield would actually pop off or windows would literally, you know, just shatter. So my question about these solar panels is the toxicity. If, how sealed are they to handle the water? Which gets into the water issue in those countries. And going back to the final comment about recyclability, I'm appalled that these solar panels, there's no standards for recyclability. There's none. Automotive, when you hop into your car, every part on that car is in a database. And we have to specify everything that that little part is. What they do, and we've been battling with the EU. They finally said, "This is what we're going to do after 15 years of the EU going back and forth." Basically, it's equivalent to if an ant is pregnant and the car goes to the junkyard, what we call end-of-life cycle. If that peeks down into the water from that part, an ant may not, may have birthed a baby. Not human, but ant, okay? That's how strict we have to load into the database, all your cars, all your trucks. We have recyclability laws. Solar companies do not. So this is a very challenging area in terms of farmland. You mentioned about the Dupont plant. There is property laws, property waivers that allow for, you know, you know, they're getting land clean. But what you put on top is total. So I have a lot more, but I just apologize for being lengthy, but since we're on this issue, like I said, michiganadvance.com, February 23rd, perfect article because it talks about here in Michigan. But says, "Here's a case study of what's going on in Ohio." And I'm familiar with the Yellow Bud Project, Southern Ohio, because it's the same company that is pushing for this. It's under the same umbrella of National Grid. If you ask people in the UK about National Grid, they'll spit in your face. That's how much they hate National Grid. Much less National Grid in the US, which is New York, Rhode Island, Massachusetts.
That's it, almost.
Can I have my name?
The last, I'm sorry, I didn't realize it was really my name.
Just name, the address. And do you live in the township?
I do, I live in the town of Alucard, anyway. I just wanted to say that there were comments about setbacks across the board, maybe being larger than most, if not all, of the existing solar ordinances in other areas. But I think we need to ask ourselves, how many other areas have, with Michigan, within a mile of their array is for one? And then I really don't think we can be too conservative in implementing larger setbacks than other areas to prefer, to preserve home and land values. And not to mention our robust Eagle, Eagle system. And then as we kind of went on here, there was a kind of a comment where I gathered that, okay, if we do the 600-foot setback and at the prime farmland, is that being too much? Are we excluding them? And I think that that shouldn't be the concern. The concern should be that we should refer back to our master plan and acknowledge the fact that there are existing private residential dwellings within, around, and near prime farmland. And that can't be changed, as Bruce mentioned. I don't think that, you know, the extreme of forcing out residents to accommodate solar is where we want to be. And I think the concern is not, should be, are we giving enough opportunity to solar in the solar array, but rather, does this fit in our township? And the fact is, according to our master plan, there's no room for an industrial solar array of this magnitude here in the neighborhood township. Thank you.
You have to limit the size, that's the bottom line, there has to be a dress.
I didn't sign my name, I didn't plan on talking.
Okay, Ma, I'll get your name, please.
Like in Quay, 7653 in the
Your district.
Yeah, that's me. So I was hoping to hear more about limiting the size, and it sounds like you're going to talk about it more. But I feel it's way too large, 1,700 acres. My brother lives in Virginia and he just limited it to 300 acres in his town. So I would like, I would hope that something like that, if a solar array goes in, is at least limited to that size. My only voice is here. This is my second home, my primary residence is in Illinois, so I don't get the vote or anything here. So please listen to what I'm saying, yeah, one of those Chicago people.
I know, sorry.
But it is
Yeah, so we do like you.
Yeah, it is a house, that part of the show. But yeah, please consider limiting it to very small. The one in Montague, that is, I drove by that, it's huge. And this is way larger, so please, please consider very small, if approved at all. Thank you.
Lauren Warkennecke. And I get your name? Okay, and then, Deb, I know you saw the two gentlemen back there. Okay, then I will move.
I just got a comment about the escrow. I think that we all have seen on Old Channel Trail, the house that put the verms up in the trees, and they died often, and they had planted them several times so that they would grow. So I think that we need some standards in the escrow to identify when plants die and that they have to be replaced. And also, I'd like to, and I don't know if you said this, but Nathan said a couple of times, and they will, they will do this, they will do that, like National Grid or the solar company. And I think that in the escrow and all these studies that we're doing, we should be, the township should be hiring those people and then having National Grid pay so that we can see the results first. And then also with the Pearson drain. It's been said several times, everything drains to the Pearson drain. And the escrow should pass the water and how much we pay for it. And while we've seen that, I mean, in Montague Township, we know that there's a draining issue. And we've seen that it isn't being done right. So I'm not sure that we should just trust what the drainage condition sets because every property is different. And so therefore, I recommend that we have the 600-foot setback from the drain as well because 100-foot is an maximum, not me.
Thank you. I have your name, please.
Yeah, Brendan Miller, I am not a resident of the township. I am with the Land Liberty Coalition. I'm actually here on behalf of several landlords and supporters of the project. As far as my unique aspects of myself that makes me particular to this particular area is one of the Land Liberty Coalition. We believe in preserving property rights for local farmers across the state. We believe that we're a conservative organization that believes that people should go do with the land what they please. Beyond that, I'm a farmer myself, second generation at this point. I farm mostly on the east side of the state, but I do have a little bit on the west side, mostly by Palano. If you guys consider that west side enough for you. But in addition to that, ironically, I actually served on the fire department for several years in my local area. I actually had to go through solar training until unfortunately I was entered in the line. My insurance wasn't, insurance wouldn't cover me anymore, so I had to set up the fire department. And also, my brother lived right next to the solar facility in LaPierre, which at one point was the largest solar facility in the state. So I have the unique perspective there. A couple of things I just wanted to address with you guys. First and foremost, I heard it'd be addressed that this impacts property values. Well, in fact, there have been hundreds of studies done on individual solar facilities. None have shown, in fact, none have shown that it impacts solar facilities. However, there was one study that did show an impact. It did impact property values. That was called the Rhode Island Study in the University of Rhode Island. That particular study, I actually did a paper on it for school, basically summarized what the study said. The study lays out three parameters. Parameter one, our homes that are listed within rural, low-density areas, like White River Township. Medium-density areas, suburbs of 150,000 in north, people who live in the area. And then finally, high-density areas, areas of somewhere between 250,000 to 500,000 and above. In urbanized areas, no property valuation was seen to take place. In low-value areas, as the study says specifically, similar developments on farms and forest land in rural areas have no impact on the urban property values. The only place where it did show, as was stated in the statement, a 7% decrease in places that are over 500 feet. That was actually only suburbanized areas that impact greenland areas. In areas with a population of over 150,000 and in highly suburbanized regions. Of course, White River Township is not included in something like that. This would be considered rural. Thus, that study was incorrectly cited, just wanted to clarify that because I had to write a whole paper on it. So there have been no studies that show impact to property values. I can tell you personally, my brother, as he said, "Wish it would impact his property values because his taxes continue to go up every single year he lives next to the solar facility." Moving on, setbacks. 600-foot setbacks are the highest setbacks that I have ever seen, and I've worked with hundreds of townships across the state. Highest I've ever seen was 400 to 500 variable setbacks. 600 would be an extreme. The one in LaPierre, where my brother lived, the variable setback to 75 feet to 125 feet. Based on people who leased the land and then roads and everything else. So 600 feet would be extreme. So 600 feet would be extreme, to say the least. Last thing, a couple of other things I wanted to make mention here. First and foremost, uh, the farmers, it was actually stated here, that the farmers know best about their land. So let the farmers do with their land what they feel is best, especially on the prime farmland issue. I can tell you, most farmers do not use the USDA Prime Farmland Map because the Prime Farmland Map was made back in the eighties, I think it was '85, somewhere around there, when it was codified. Uh, something to keep in mind, since the late seventies, we've lost a third of the topsoil in communities across the country. Here, uh, the average topsoil is somewhere between six to 12 inches. Uh, just to keep that in mind, we lost about at least, uh, three to five inches just since the seventies, since that took place. So to use the USDA Prime Farmland is not something that a lot of organizations use, though governments do use it from time to time, but actual farmers do not. Uh, one other thing you need to keep in mind is that this is a voluntary thing. Farmers are not forced to put their land into solar. They choose to do that. If they choose to do that, can't you trust that the farmer who's been there for decades and whose family has farmed that land for generations knows what is best for their land? Not people who just moved to the community, or not people who happen to live right next to a farm, or better yet, not the government? Is it not a part of this country that the government shouldn't determine what you do with your own land, but instead you determine it as long as you are able to be, it, uh, as it says in the ZOI Naval Act, health, safety, and welfare? When it comes to health, there is no leaching. It's been proven. The pane's a glass. There's triple paint. Everything else is sealed with inside. I've done a study on it. We're actually doing more culinary studies on it at my particular college throughout the spring. We've shown there is no leaching from these solar panels. Solar panels are 99% recyclable. They do not end up in landfills. After the solar panels get done at a project in 30 years, they're still going to be 80% efficient. Those go to secondhand markets. Those aren't just immediately thrown into a landfill. Not to mention in 30 years, I would think that we'd be able to get that 1% that's not renewable, renewable by then. There's actually more chemicals, more dangerous things in here than there is in a solar panel. Exponentially more. And if you're worried about ground leaching, if you're worried about groundwater, another thing to consider, if anyone around here grows soybeans, I grow soybeans myself, so I know how this works. They use something called glyphosate, AKA Roundup. It's used very commonly. That is considered more toxic than anything found in a solar facility. So when it comes to toxicity, it's not a problem. Comes to welfare, it does not affect property values. It's been shown in study, and study, and study again. When it comes to safety, that's why you have fencing. Use wildlife fencing. That's very common, uh, wildlife fencing. It's very common. Deer can jump over it. It's very common to happen. My brothers have deer all along the backfields when you live there. Sound is also not an issue. I can tell you, uh, going to his house, you've never heard of the solar panels unless the very odd times when you're sitting there and there's no wind and the crickets aren't loud, and it's a very hot summer day. You might get a very, very faint buzz, but that's extreme and that virtually never happens. The last thing I want to comment on was the fire issue. I went through the fire training. Solar panels are not flammable themselves. The only thing that does have any risk are inverters. Generally speaking, anyone who was on a fire department will tell you, if an inverter catches on a fire, you just kind of sit back and let it go. You do not mess with it. You might use foam. Some fire departments do use foam. Generally, it's a little expensive. You could, you know, I, we've had developers in the past donating foam to the township if needed. If that foam is used, it is made to count, uh, to break down in a certain way so it's not toxic to groundwater, so that wouldn't be an issue. But solar panels, uh, do not catch on fire. At least it's never been seen. Um, as far as the natural disaster thing, we had a tornado go through LaPierre. It was a low E-grade EF1. Virtually no damage to solar panels. Uh, same with hail. We had a large hailstorm go through there. I talked to the managers there. They said, yeah, we had a three or four that broke, but nothing broke internally because it's triple paint. So it'd be kind of ridiculous for it to break all the way through there. So if you have any more questions, feel free to come up to me. I'll be more than happy to provide you guys as much information as possible. I just want to remind you guys, the farmers know what's best for the land. They've done it for decades. Their families have done it for generations. Let the farmers do what they want with their land. Thank you.
Can I stop at this end, please? Okay, great. For the subjects? So, um, first of all, with this being a voluntary thing, um, as a mother, I'm not going to stand by and accept a choice that someone else made that has an impact on my family and the lives of my four children. Also, I don't appreciate other people coming in here and assuming what they know about our community. This is very painful. This is hurtful. I have neighbors. I love these farmers. My son works for a farmer that is like his second father. So I'd rather not be accused of thinking that I'm against these farmers and that they may not know things. I know that they know things, and I know that you know things. And let's just go ahead and be honest. You guys have been put through the wringer as well, and we thank you for all your hard work. Um, but as, as far as it goes with the farmers and how much they know, that's fine. But when your decision or their decision to do with what they're doing impacts us, our families, why we moved here, our neighborhoods, our schools, our churches? And if you think I'm being, you know, extra about this, uh-uh. We're, we're all combined here. This is how this works. We go to school and we see people there that we live next to. We go to church and we see the farmers that are promoting this. It's not that easy, and it's not that simple. So no, I am for property rights, for sure. But now when it comes down to my property and my children, thank you.
Uh, any?
Yeah, Melissa's, yeah, Melissa Lorenz, White River Township resident. Um, I, I wish it were as simple as what I'm about to say, but I really think it's really simple. It's not a debate about solar, climate change, anything else. It is land use and its zoning. And Brendan, to your point, this requires a special land use permit. This is not a given. You know that. This is something that is driven by the master plan. We've talked about it. Liz talked about it a thousand times. There's a reason why we have a master plan. It says right on the website. It's the legal foundation for the variances. If you take all the emotion and everything out of it, which, believe me, has been hard as hell to do for every single one of us. And you guys, again, I have to thank you so much before I continue because I am sure you are going through hell. I am sure that this is more than hard, especially when we have outside influences coming in to try to interfere with your relationship with your constituents, which are the landowners and homeowners in this township. And this is who we need to worry about. Anyway, so that being said, it's a zoning issue. And the biggest thing that I hoped to hear today when I came here too was what size fits in our master plan. I really thought that, uh, Nathan was amazing. He was amazing. The increased setbacks, everything else is beautiful. But in my mind, there has to be a percentage cap on acreage for any kind of solar installation. You're going to get this door opened again and again and again. It's open now. You're going to get lots of companies that are going to come, want to come in. They're going to want to take up every square inch of land that we have got. I have, he referenced MSU, and you know, MSU is very much into renewables. I think solar's great. You know, I think wastewater treatment plants are great too. We all need them. I still don't think it's right to have them in someone's backyard. But this is the ordinance, the snippet of the ordinance, ordinance from Ottawa County. We all know where that is. Chester Township, 2,000 people, almost the size of ours. They do not allow solar on prime farmland. Period. End of story. So we have a lot of things at our disposal, and I think the first concern should be, what is going to fit within this township where we may be helping? Maybe solar is here, but where does it not upend everyone's lives and decimate what we've got? And that is the biggest question. It has got to be smaller, and it's got to be a cap of some sort so that you have the guideline. So you're not sitting here again and again and again. We wouldn't all be here today if this was a 50-acre project. You know, there would be a portion of us here, whoever's land that it affects. But bottom line, 1,700 acres, Brendan, I would like to ask you, and anybody can skew numbers any way they want. A lot of us work in corporate business. Numbers can tell a story. They always tell a story. But in your land values, were those 1,700-acre arrays? And how close were those homes? You could put every single one of those variables up on screen, but you can't give one blanket answer and say the home values don't change. We want to see everyone. How big? How far? Where? Of course, they wouldn't affect an urban area. Nobody has a solar field. I just moved here from downtown Chicago. I was in the corner of Dearborn and Division. There's not going to be a solar field at the sidewalk next to me. So there is no comparison there. You can debunk a lot of this stuff really easily. But what is most important is what we're looking at out those windows right there, that this thing has got to be managed down in size. It, it really, really does. And so again, I'm glad that the setbacks and everything were talked about. I'm glad Nathan brought up the prime farmland. But please, I urge you to really look at it. Montague Township, I don't know how many square miles more Montague Township is than us, but we shouldn't have anything even as big as them. It doesn't make sense. National Grid has a 40-megawatt project on 65 square miles in Clinton, Monroe County. 65 square miles. That's one-fifth the size of what they're, they want to do here. So anyway, I'm beating a dead horse. I think you, you get my point. But I also, I want to look at two more things really quickly. One of the suggestions that we sent in is the liability seems to be, and forgive me if I didn't hear this, it seems to be all on the applicant. What about the landowner? National Grid is not going to hold this for 20 years. They may hold it for three years. They were, their renewables division was only developed in 2020. They have a handful of projects. I'm sure you guys have looked at their website and seen where their footprint is. Everybody jumped on board when the federal taxes and subsidies came into play. It would be fair to say that these companies might not even be doing this had they not been getting that money. That's just my opinion. But they don't need to hold this. The Montague Township Array did not hold it. I know it's changed hands. I do know, much to Anne's point, that all brothers right now are being called liars to the company that currently owns that solar array. They will not help them with their flooding problem. National Grid can tell us anything they want to tell us, and they can sell this in a year, or they can sell this in five years, and then what happens? And then in the ordinance, is that passed on to the new owner? I'm sure that it is. I don't understand the legalese, so forgive me. But I believe that it should be joint ownership. You know, this gets to the end of decommissioning. What if the company that owns it goes bankrupt? Then who pays for the decommissioning? And quite frankly, you know, First Solar, the producer of these panels, does recycle them, but it's up to the company as to whether they are going to pay for recycling or not. It's more expensive to put them into recycling than it is the landfill. That you can find factually. I don't think that's, you know, the crux of it right now for us, but that is a point worth mentioning, that this is a 20, 30-year commitment. How do we protect us for that long? And then just last but not least, um, and I hope they have an engineer working on this too. I wanted to bring that up because the Pearson drain, we've had so many problems with that already. We all see what's happening downtown. A whole bunch of stormwater, you know, MSU, when I talked to Charles Gould there, who's wonderful, by the way, but he said, oh, you're going to have so much rainwater going into the ground without crops to catch it. Great. And so that goes into Pearson drain, and then it floods out Hancock again, or something like that, you know? All these things have to be thought of. He was actually surprised when I called him again after the Montague Array started flooding, and he said, gosh, I had no idea. I just had lunch there. And I said, well, you might want to look at the end result of what you are proponents of so that you can protect people when companies come to them and promise something really great, and then it doesn't turn out that way. Anyway, lastly, I just want to reiterate the point. You guys know this, and we thank you again for your hard work. And I know it's hard to deal with a lot of the passion and everything from all of us, but we love this place. And it is the residents and it is the landowners that this is about. It's land use. It's special land use. It's zoning. That's it. Thank you very much. Sorry.
I was going to say something, but I don't think I have to now. Because you said everything succinctly. Anyway, okay, so I'll just introduce myself. Oh, sorry. Um, my name is Lucinda Grover. And actually, I grew up in Montague. And God, I'm going to get emotional. And I moved to Grand Rapids, and I flipped there. For 40, more than 40 years, I drove back and forth from Grand Rapids to home, which was at the end of Hancock Road. All my life, through my twenties, through my thirties, through my forties, I brought my daughter home, back and forth, Grand Rapids to Montague. And I always talked to her about what it was like growing up here. And when I would drive back to Grand Rapids, I always felt inside that I was kind of driving the wrong way. I was going back to Grand Rapids, to my home, that I share with my daughter, to the life that I made there. But I always felt like I was going in the wrong direction when I was driving east. So a few years ago, um, actually only a year ago, it was pretty quick. Um, we sold the house on Lake Michigan at the end of Hancock Road, and I called my cousin Bruce, and I said, I might be coming into a chunk of change. I want to find some land here for the whole home. I wanted to come back here, and I was just, it was a dream. And I didn't know what would happen, but as fate would have it, I ended up buying my aunt's house on Fruitvale Road, and that's where I live now. So I'm living right across the street from the farm that I played in with my cousin Joanne. You know, it, all of this is so familiar to me. And I always marvel at how this town, Montague, doesn't change very much. And that's not a negative. I always felt like this community knows what its identity is. It knows who it is. And in Grand Rapids, and in any other place in Michigan, anywhere you travel, land goes away. It's constantly going away. It's constantly being developed. And here, you can still look out and you see this. So the thought of a solar array going in and filling up all of this is absolutely incredulous to me. The size is just, it's way out of whack. I hope that the size is addressed. And there are so many issues with this. There are so many layers of this. I'm not going to stand and reiterate because Melissa and everybody else has spoken so beautifully on it before. And there is a neighbor here that I haven't met yet, that I live right around the corner from her. And everybody should be able to do what they want with their land. That's true. But if we're a community, we take into consideration how it affects everybody else. That's what a community is. It's not a one for, it's not an all-for-me. It's the community. And the health issues, the safety issues. And you brought up a wonderful point about in case there is fire, in case there is an accident, how do we tackle that? I, as I said, there's so many issues. And I'll be continuing writing letters. But I really, really hope that as this continues to get underway or continues, that we look at absolutely everything and we come back to the master plan. That's the road. That's the most important thing. That's the backbone. And that's where we need to land. Thank you.
My name is Deborah Hopkins, and I live on Lane and Road. And like Mike, I'm not originally from Montague. I grew up in a farming community in Illinois. And when I was a young adult, I moved into the city of Chicago. And my husband is from the city of Chicago, and we raise our four kids there. But 25 years ago, we found Montague, and we started renting a house here, and we rented for a couple of weeks every summer. Um, and our kids were able to experience the life that you all are so blessed to have and, and which I grew up with. The community that I grew up with doesn't exist anymore. I mean, it does, but not in its, in any way, shape, or form recognizable as what it was when I was a child. It just experienced unfettered industrialization and growth. And when I drive out to visit my extended family, um, it's, it never, it never doesn't hurt me when I see what's become of what used to be beautiful, rolling farmland that I played in and on, in the creeks and with the turtles and everything that we have here. And, um, we bought our property in 2008, but you know, we were in the midst of raising our kids. Um, and. and weren't going to pull them away from their friends and the rest of our family. But just coincidentally, I became a permanent resident here at the start of 2020 and was thrown into like, like a complete immersion that I didn't completely expect because of COVID. And just fell even more in love with this community and the way everyone pulled together and loved each other through that incredibly stressful time. And I find it so heartbreaking that now this same loving community can be so hurt by outside influences. And while I do think that people have their own personal property rights, I kind of dispute the fact that farmers who love their land and have farmed it for generations know exactly what's best as far as it comes to industrialization of that same land. So everyone else has spoken eloquently and beautifully and so thoroughly and have educated themselves on all of the chemical processes and the recycling and all of the questionable issues that I think it's wonderful that you as a board of, you know, to take the time to study further. But I just wanted to put in my two cents about what you have here is so beautiful. And I've seen what happens to communities when you lose it and it's not pretty. And it would just be a tragedy to, to allow something of this scope to come in here and tear apart what you have. And I think there's a song about that. You don't know what you've, that's all is gone. And when it's gone, it's gone forever. There's really no way to take it back to what it is right now. No way. That's all. That's all, Anderson. Thank you for listening.
I just want to make a quick.
We're going to reach back, right?
Can I just make a quick point? Mary Jars. I'm a resident. My dad and I live at 7044 Old Channel Trail. Everybody, I mean, I don't even know what else I can add. Except for I have one little point and it's her point about industrialization of the area. If we take the 1,300 acres from DuPont, our, and you add the 1,700 acres from National Grid, we end up with 3,000 acres. Does anybody know what size our township is in acres? Brendan? Does anybody know?
10,000.
10,000. We would have 30% of our entire land mass industrial. This is way too big. Way too big. Everything else has been said, so I'm going to sit down and move on. I want to make that point. Because when we only do our numbers, it's 17%. It's not 17%. It's 30% because we have DuPont. And if we went a mile down the road, we've got 800 acres, 880 acres from Hooker. So that's my point. All righty. And where comments, we will enter the motion to close the work session.
I would make that motion.
Thank you. On second. We're all big and bad.